All right. All right, the time is seven thirty-three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, are you on the line?
Yes.
Could you do the invitation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you for your goodness and we thank you for your mercies. We thank you for being so mindful of us and how you love us. Father, we invite you into this meeting and we ask that you would give us wisdom and wise counsel and that this would be a productive meeting. And Father God, we just ask that you remove all distractions or anything that will cause this meeting to be unproductive. And Father, we just thank you for opportunity to come together as a city and to do the business of the city. And Father God, I ask that you will bless everyone that is associated with the city, all of the people that are attendees to this meeting, the employees, elected officials, and citizens of this city. In Jesus' name I pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call, please?
Sure, Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Gill.
Here.
Councilman Hairston. I don't see him yet. Councilman Herring. Councilman Herring, you're, oh, there you go.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Apposition? Here, non-binary national consent, the agenda is adopted. The only two items on the agenda are the Resolutions R-34 2024, a resolution to revise the rules, regulations, and fees, schedules for the Gold Room, and Resolution R-35-2024, a resolution to revise the rules, regulations, and fee schedules for the Community Center and Woodmore Town Center. We can start with our thirty-four. We've gone over this before. I think the sticking point has been the waiver. I believe the last time we had it, but I'll open the floor to council if there are any updates or questions regarding our thirty-four 2024.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harry.
Yeah, I have a couple of items I want to go on this. I'm starting with the Gold Room.
Mm-hmm.
Regulation fees and schedules. Okay, I guess I'm looking at, on page number one, under Rules and Regulations, under Inquiries, it has like non-prime time events.
What page? I'm sorry.
Going to the Rules and Regulations, pass the resolution into the body of the page one. That was it, page one. Right there, yeah. So item number one, so I just want to be clear on this. So basically, a person has to reserve a minimum of four hours for a non-prime time event or a maximum between four hours, a minimum of four hours and a maximum of seven hours based on the rental rates that we have in place. Is that correct? Is that what we're doing here?
Well, I believe so. Ms. Bun.
That's correct.
So if somebody told, on average, a person would have to spend, on average, for those, for that event, if they do a Monday through Friday, they got to spend on average nine hundred dollars for an event, no matter what. The minimum they're going to pay is nine hundred dollars for that event. That's correct. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, if that's, that's what they, if they are in that that line, yes.
So, and if they get it on Friday, the minimum they're going to spend is a thousand dollars. And that's two seventy-five per hour. So. Go ahead.
So Monday through Friday, between nine AM and ten AM, is one seventy-five per hour. That's for Glen Arden residents, and for a non-resident, it's two twenty-five per hour.
Looking at only non-residents, because that's where most of the money is going to be made at. So for non-residents, it's going to be nine hundred dollars minimum you're going to pay to use that room and Monday through Friday, and a thousand dollars if you use it on Friday. And I guess my question is, we're not making money on it now, so why would we, where currently the rate is a hundred dollars per hour, where you can use it for four hundred dollars for an event. So we're taking up the rate for, at a time when there's never, when the room is always black during the week. So what's going to make you think people are going to pay a thousand dollars, nine hundred or a thousand dollars, nine hundred or eleven hundred dollars, that's what it should be? Nine hundred or eleven hundred dollars for Monday through Friday? If we're not even getting, if we're not booking anything now except for repasses at four hundred dollars, I mean, versus the four hundred dollars that you pay now for the room. If we're not booking anything at four hundred dollars and we're not getting any business, which is mostly what will come in during the week, why will we take it up to nine hundred dollars between nine hundred and eleven hundred dollars? I'm not understanding the logic in that. Business-wise, that makes absolutely no sense.
Can I answer?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so I disagree. We have been booking the room. We actually got a big contract recently with the, with Greater Washington Urban League, which we received over six thousand dollars from that. That was a weekday event. So people are starting to hear about the Gold Room. We're starting to get more traffic in other than repasses during the week. So we have been busy. All of our Saturdays coming up are absolutely completely booked. And we're looking at just booking Fridays at this point. So we have been booking. We have been making money. And then, you know, if you wanted to have, you know, finance jump in, they can explain that we have been making money at the Gold Room.
Let me just go back to my original question. I didn't say anything about the weekend. I said Monday through Friday. You booked that one event for six thousand dollars. How many other events have you had during the week outside of repass?
So like I was stating, that we are starting to get traffic on Fridays now.
Okay, I'm asking again, how many events have you booked Monday through Friday outside of repasses? I'm just trying to figure out, because it makes absolutely no sense to try to charge nine hundred dollars. You're not booking anything now, so what makes you think somebody's going to pay nine hundred dollars or eleven hundred dollars for a room that is not being booked now, at four hundred dollars? You can book it for four hundred dollars now and get the same amount of space, but now you're going to more than double, more than double the rate and think you're going to book, and think you're going to book anything. It is absolutely no, you have absolutely no numbers, I can tell you that right now, that would justify taking up the rent on that space from four hundred dollars to nine hundred dollars. Because you just, you just quoted one, you lucky enough to get one event at six thousand dollars. But I'm asking you, what other, how many other events have you had during the week that would justify the taking the rate up, that would attract more people to come in at nine hundred dollars versus it's being at four hundred dollars now and you're barely getting anything? I'm just trying to get an understanding. Financial, I mean, just let me just tell you this. I've been looking at the numbers and I've been looking at the numbers for twenty years. So I know what the numbers do and I know what the numbers say, and the Gold Room is still not making money. The Gold Room is still in a deficit. So, I mean, and I look at the financial report every month. But I'm just trying to ask, what is the logic between doubling the rate during the non-prime time hours from four hundred to nine hundred dollars? I mean, you, what numbers did you have to justify that amount?
So I believe if we stay where we are at, we're not going to, we're not going to make money where we're at now.
Okay, but you got, the way you run a business, actually, is that you start out low and you attract the people in there. You get them in there to see your venue. You get them in there to see what you have, and if traffic is picking up, then you go ahead and get them, entice them to come in. That's a dead spot. That's a blackout area. The whole, the week is a blackout area. You want people in there, so you entice them to come in there. Let the word of mouth get out there. Advertise it. I see no marketing being done for business hours. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do you expect people to come in there at nine hundred dollars when they're not coming in there at four hundred dollars? So I mean, I mean, there's, there's nothing, from a business standpoint, it makes no sense. I'm just saying. You know, I don't know why we would jack up a price like that for a blackout. A lot of times, people give a lower price to entice people to come in. As business pick up and as the, as the words get out that this is a nice room to have a business function in, then you start taking your rates up gradually. But twenty years of sitting on this council, twenty years of dealing with this Gold Room, that rate has been low and has been very little traffic during the week. During the week is always a dark, dark period for the Gold Room. So I'm not understanding, what, what, what numbers do you have? What justification do you have for bringing it up? You keep on saying that you booked this one event, but that one event doesn't justify doubling the rate.
So we are the lowest in this area. That's one of the reasons. We are the lowest. We're extremely low on prices. And even with these numbers, in PG County, we are the lowest. And even with these numbers, we will still be the lowest in the area.
Okay, now let me ask you this follow-up question. So we're the lowest in Prince George County, correct?
Correct.
And we're not booking the space now?
Why, I'm not understanding where you're, where you're getting that from.
I'm getting it from the financial reports. You just gave me one event that you had for six thousand dollars and you got lucky to get that. But I know there's nothing going on during the week, because I live in Glen Arden and I see what's going on. I'm on the council. I see what the numbers is coming in. Most of the numbers in your reports are for repass during the week.
That's not true.
You're not getting a lot of business traction during the week. That's what I'm saying. I mean, and my thing is this, if we're the lowest, then that room should be booked every day of the week. So that shows you that the problem isn't, is not, taking it up to nine hundred dollars is not the way you, is not the way to go. That's what I'm saying. Because the numbers, I read the reports that we get. I read your financial reports. I read your Gold Room report. And the majority of the money that's made during the week is in repass. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a clear understanding on what, what, from a business mind, a business point of view, and looking at it from a business standpoint, what sense does it make to take up a rate from four hundred dollars to nine hundred dollars when you're not selling it? That's just like saying, I'm going to sell these apples for five hundred dollars, but the man across the street is selling his apples for a dollar. They're going to go across the street. They're not going to come and buy my apples because my apples are too expensive and they don't see the reason for doing that. And if they're, and if they're not, they're not buying my apples, and if I had apples at five hundred dollars and they're not buying them at five hundred dollars now, why would I raise my apples up to six hundred dollars thinking they're going to buy them then? That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I guess I got to put it in a layman's terms. I'm looking at it from a financial standpoint. Y'all looking at it from, I looked at everybody else's prices and we're low and we're going to take our rates up. That's not, that's not the way you run a business. And that's what I see as the problem here, is that people are in here who do not know how to run a business. You got to attract people in there before you take your rates up. And I'm not trying to bash you or anything, but I'm just tired of people coming in here thinking that they can just look at everybody else and say, that's what, that's what, that's the business model I'm going to follow. Because that business, business models are done specifically for the group that you're, for the entity that you're running. This business, right now, the Gold Room does not attract business Monday through Friday during the daytime hours, the non-prime time hours. So you may want to keep that rate lower to attract business up in there, because I don't care what you do to that room. No one's going to sit there and pay nine hundred dollars for that room if you're not, if they're not paying four hundred dollars right now. So I'm trying to figure out, what is, what is, what is going to get them in a room at nine hundred dollars versus four hundred dollars?
All right, so.
Go ahead. Because I'm not going to see, I'm not going to be interrupted through this guy. I got a whole lot more I got to go through, and I'm not going to sit here and be interrupted all through here, because I want to ask questions. So go ahead.
Well, well, this is one question. So I'm opening the floor for council members on this topic, so we don't have to circle back on it. I can come back to you for your next question.
Go ahead, go ahead. Let's go. Somebody's got, what's your kind of, go ahead.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you. My question was going to be what Ms. Bun has already indicated. In comparison to other venues, she indicated that this, this is a lower rate. And I think by the time we finish with the updates of the Gold Room, and I am seeing marketing online for the Gold Room, so to say that there's no marketing, that's not true. The, I'm seeing plenty of marketing on the, on the, on social media for the Gold Room. So, and maybe we need to do a little more than, than that to get through this. But my question was going to be on concerning the comparison of venues. And you already answered that and said that, that would, that's the reason for the increase in price. I have no, no issue with that. Thank you, Ms. Bun. Thank you, Council President.
Thanks. On the same topic, and then I'll come back to you if there are not any more questions or comments on this topic, Mr. Harry. I, I think, for me at least, the question isn't why are we raising the, the fee? The question is, if we have the lowest in all of PG County and we're still not attracting someone, if that is correct, which I don't believe it is, but let's just, for argument's sake, say that is correct, then the problem isn't necessarily the fee. The problem is the venue. If somebody comes and see that, oh, man, this, this person, we could get this room for, you know, cheap, and they still don't want to come, then we have to fix the venue, because they come and they see that the venue isn't up to date and up to standard and something they would like to rent, which is why we are going through this, through the resolution to update the Gold Room, so that it could be more appealing. Now, I've seen during a weekday, tons of traffic in there because I'm always trying to find a place to park when I come up during the weekday. And I'm not, I'm not up there every day, but when I do come up there on a weekday, I do see that there's a lot of traffic there. And I, I agree with Ms. Bun that we, I mean, even with the increase, we're still the lowest. So we have to attack this on several fronts. One, we have to update the Gold Room. Two, we have to address the fee so that we can make money. Three, we have to market. And, and this, the reason why we hired Ms. Bun and because of her expertise in this area, and I'm willing to allow her to work this area, to, to see what she could do with the Gold Room, because, like you said, Councilmember Harry, and we haven't done so great in at least recent history. And so with Lakeisha, you know, being an expert in her field, then I'm interested to see how we can transform this to, to be what, to surpass what it used to be. So with that, are there any other questions or comments from council members? So I do see that there is a question from Ms. Arnold, but unfortunately, Ms. Arnold, during work sessions, it's an opportunity for council to work together without interruption from the public, so that we can work it out and move on. You're welcome to come to the public hearing next week to state your opinion on it and provide advice, or you can email us and, you know, we can respond to you. If there aren't any other questions from council, Mr. Harry, you go to your second one.
Yeah, I'm not finished on the first one, because I'm still not getting clear, because statements were just made that actually makes absolutely no sense. Because again, as I say, the traffic that's being generated now is through repasses. That's what it is.
I agree with you, but.
And that's, and that's a separate fee from non-prime time outs. I'll get to repasses later. But the non-prime time hours are what I'm talking about. Now, again, having done this, been dealing with this Gold Room for twenty years and having worked in events and all kind of planning on my jobs with conferences and everything for, you know, twenty, about twenty years, I'm going to tell you right now, you're balking up the wrong tree when you're talking about a renovation. Because again, Gold Room was already renovated seven years ago. It's very appealing to people. The only thing that Gold Room really needs now is an AV system. That's what's going to attract the business people that I talk to, saying, we can't use the room, because when we have, when we have a room and this, if a person experienced in event rooms, this would be, this would have been laid out for you, that they need an AV system that's operable, operated, I mean, operable for what they want to do, for, you know, video PowerPoint presentations and all of that. They also prefer to have a venue that also provides catering, because they don't want to do anything. They want to come in there, have their meeting, and leave. They don't want to have to provide, do all the catering and everything else. So no matter what, you're always going to be at a disadvantage when it comes to this room. This room is a room to hold events, to generate money for the Gold Room. It is not the Martin's Cross Rooms. It is not PG County Ballroom. And I'm just, and there's, there's no way that, see, that's what I'm saying, when we need to look at this as a business, because that's what it is. It's a business. And I don't care what you say, no business is going to raise their rate from four hundred dollars to nine hundred dollars when no one is using that time slot right now. Nobody's using that space right now. You encourage the people to get in. That's all you, that's what you do. And you do it by, like I said, again, if you were trying to get businesses up in there, then, put it, I've been trying to get an AV system in there, screens in there, something that's going to attract people that can be utilized for business lunches, because that's what you're going to get most people during the week anyway, you know? So that's, that's my thing. But I just don't understand this whole logic that you can't go and compare somebody else's venue to what you have, because what you have is not what they have. And because their rates are, our rates are low, we should be booking everything in and of itself. And we're not booking, not because of the way the room looks. It's because we don't have the technology that the room needs for what they need to do for a business, from a business standpoint, when it comes to conferences and everything else. Businesses don't want to. Every, every event, every conference that I went to, every conference that I managed and did the finances for, the biggest thing they said to me, we want to be able to get in and get out. We may always make sure there's an AV system in there. If it's not, then we don't want to use that room. We don't want to use the facility, because we're not going to put it up ourselves. And that's what you should be looking at, not spending a whole bunch of money on a remodel that was done, and when a remodel was just done seven, seven years ago, and then you're talking about taking out a stove out of the, out of the Gold Room, which, which bothers me. That's another issue. I'll get to that later. When we talk about renovations. But anyway, I'm going on to my second issue. But that's what I'm saying. I don't understand this nine hundred dollar increase. It makes absolutely no sense. You're not getting anybody in there now. Why are you going to take it up over, over, over a hundred percent of what the rate was before? And you're not going to get anybody in then, you know? I mean, it's going to stay dark. And again, I still would like to know how many functions are being carried. And this is a question that I want an answer to, because I'm going to ask, I'm going to come back to it again, probably at the next meeting. So have your numbers ready for me. How many, how many events are being held in the Gold Room that's not a repass during those Monday through Thursday, Friday, Monday through Friday, non-prime time outs? I'd like to get that information, so we can see what's what, you know? And also, I mean, in comparing, like I said again, comparing, our venue with other people's venue and saying, because it's the lowest, we're going to raise prices. That's why, that's why people go out of business. That's not what you do. You look at the market, you see what can bear. You see what you do to try to business up in there. All right, my next issue, my next question is, so on the, on the prime time events, you had to block seven hours flat. That's what we're saying with that. On number two, prime time events consist of all events. I just want to make sure I'm right about that.
Correct, I believe so.
Ms. Bun?
Correct.
Okay. The next item is on page, page three. Down under item number three, all the way down, right there, where it says once, the last paragraph. I guess I'm looking at the sentence that says, the second sentence, a rental agreement and security deposit for incidentals is still required for a gratis event. I thought a gratis event was a gratis event.
But what if they go in there and they ruin the space?
But I think, I thought you had given these organizations gratis, so that they can, because of who they are.
No, if, if, if someone gets gratis and they come in here and disrespect our space, then they should pay for the damage that they caused.
Why are you giving gratis if you think they're going to, if they're going to tear up the space?
It could be an accident, you know? That's fine, but they're still responsible and accountable for any damage that they do. They have to, any gratis event, they're still held to the agreement, to the rules.
Do we charge a security deposit right now?
Say what?
Do we charge a security deposit right now?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Bun?
So for, for the gratis, there is no clear indication on gratis. This is something that was included with this, that it needed to, to, to be included, with the, the security deposit needed to be included.
And for clarity, I said yes, because I, I booked sometime and I had to pay a down payment, so I assume.
So in the old rules, when you, when you have a gratis event, there's no charge? Well, there's a hundred dollar service charge, that's it. So you're not charged, so when people have gratis, you charge them nothing?
No, I was informed, nothing.
Okay, yeah, because it says no deposit. And it says that in these rules.
That's right. Ms. Harry, mine wasn't gratis, so that makes sense. Mine was not gratis. That's why I paid the deposit.
Okay. I just was wondering, I mean, it is what it is, and you know, I see, once these rules bellyache, it'll be gone. All right, I just want to get that clear. On page four, let's see. At the very top, the first, the first item, please note for all gratits and elected official events, this should be scheduled in advance and during non-prime time slots or during off-seasons. What's off-seasons?
So slow seasons. And this could change possibly, but if we're trying to make money in the Gold Room, I think we should consider, you know, how many events that we do on a busy, busy month. You know, possibly one, one event, you know, per, per month or something, but that's where this came in at. If we're trying to make money, if we're trying to make money, the slower, the slower months, like winter months or something like that. But if we're trying to make money in the Gold Room, Saturdays is one of our busiest, busiest days. So that's where that came in at. And it could possibly change if we don't have anything booked, but I wanted to take this into consideration and have that outlined.
What elected officials are you talking about?
Um, council or, you know, any elected officials that wanted to do an event on the weekend.
No, that ain't going to fly. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit there and agree to that. You want to hold us to a non-prime time time slot? We own the room. We can have it whenever we want to have it. And we, I mean, my thing is, if you're giving gratis to, buying gratis events to nonprofits and we own the room, when we have an event, we have an event. And I'm not going to, I don't think we should be held to no non-prime time slot. I don't agree with that.
Kevin, I have a question for you, Councilmember Harry. So in that case, council members, and there's a, I'm sorry, Ms. Bun, first to you, is there a cap on the number of gratis events elected officials have? I think it's one, one year, right?
Um, I, I believe so. I'm not really, really full sure with that.
Let me ask a question before you go. Are you talking about events that we normally have at cancer awareness and all of those?
Yes.
Oh, I'm not talking about that.
That's what I'm saying. No, I don't think we should be capped to that. We own this room and we, we put, we put thousands of dollars into this room. And if you want to have an event for the citizens, because the building belongs to the citizens, then we should be able to use it when we want to use it. And you just got to work around that. What you should be doing is getting with us early in, before the next year, to find out when we want to have, what we, what we plan on having. We normally have the same thing every year. So my thing is this, you got all of these. So my thing is this, you got all of these Saturdays, you should be making more than enough money. But I don't think that should, that, that definitely should not be held to this coun- to this council and events that we had. I don't agree with that. Yeah, I just don't agree with that. I go to the end, it'd be held to a Monday or Friday to have an event that people can't come to because it's during, during workday and we're not working in daytime. So I gotta work, I gotta take off from my job to have an event in the daytime that nobody's gonna come to. Between in the morning hours or in the afternoons or on a weekday when they may be working too and everybody else is working. That, that take, that doesn't benefit the community at all, and that's what we're here to do, benefit the community. So one minute you want it to be a business, one minute you wanna help the community and next minute you wanna uh. Run as a business. So if you're gonna run as a business, then you need to run it as a business coming in the fir- at, at the very first thing I brought up, which was, which was the rate. Four hundred versus nine hundred. So you know, you can't pick and choose when you want it to be a business. It's gonna be a business or it's not, but I don't agree with. That stipulation for the council. I do not agree with that. Cause if that's the case, then we need to get rid of all, we need to get rid of all gratis events then, cause the room's not making money. And only the, and, and, and the only need a council, allow, allow the council to do what, what events they wanna do. If there's, if, if there's a money issue, then gratis should not be, gratis should not even be offered.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Council President, uh. The goal room is slated as a business and I understand that. And if, if a person schedules an event. On a particular Saturday. In six months, three months, six months, a year in advance. Then that, if they've given a deposit, then that uh, particular event should take precedence over anything else. Then we as a city would have to work around that. It can't be both way. You can't have it both ways. Once you wanted a business and then the other hand, you wanna just come in whenever uh, the, the city wants to hold an event. Yes. The goal room is a, is supposedly slated as a business, more so than any other uh. Any other uh. I don't know where that interference is coming from. More than any other. More than any other uh, uh, room that we um, that is uh, used. Uh, that's what the goal room is for. It's, it was slated as a business. It's an enterprise zone for the city of Glen Arden. And I'm sure that citizens understand that. If we're gonna make money, if we're gonna be uh, 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 out there to make money for the goal room, then. That's what the, the, the form, first and foremost uh. Issue should be, is that it's a business and we wanna make money. And as far as the gratis is concerned, gratis is only once a year for, for, for uh, each, for any elected official. I understand that the city wants to have different events. But like I said, if somebody schedules a goal room, whoever is the first come, first served, and that goes for council events. Uh, mayor events, any city events uh, that are, that are uh, requested. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'll be incumbent on us to work with the goal room coordinator since. You know, as Councilman Harry said, the goal room does fall under council, but some of things are uh, annual. Uh, and so they'll be easy for us to mark off uh, at the beginning of the year. Um, at the beginning of fiscal year, um. And then in between then, work with uh, Ms. Bun to schedule any other events that we will have. Um, and I think that's just communication. Um, I, I mean, I see what Mr. Harry is talking about, but I also see what Ms. Bun's talking about if, if, you know, let's say. All the elected officials in Prince George's County want to come and have a back-to-back event from, I don't know, um. June, July and August. Well, that's not a good business decision on our end. Um, so there will need to be some parameters. Uh, how we define those, that's up to us, but. I understand both sides that there needs to be some parameters around it. Uh, and also that there might be something that comes up, but if something that comes up at the drop of a dime, then we will have to. Be responsible and work with uh, Ms. Bun to schedule it, um, where there's an opening slot. Whether it be prime time or non-prime time. Our Councilman Harry, was that, was that it?
Be clear on this one, cause I, I, this is gonna be a long meeting. The people jumping in makes things that I don't. It's not what I said. I just said we should not be held to non-prime time hours. That's what I said. Uh, of course we not gonna, I'm not, I don't, I don't agree with bumping anybody from a slot. Didn't say that we should bump anybody from a slot, as Ms. Jones in uh, in her, in her statement. Um, sometimes you gotta listen to what person is saying and don't make up stuff as you, that you think you hear. No, I, we've never bumped anybody from us. I've never bumped anybody from the slot. You know, now my slots I've had, I've been bumped. You know, because they weren't report, they weren't reported, but you know, that's another whole thing. Another issue, but um, again, if somebody paid for it and they got a contract, no, I don't say bump anybody. Like you say, we work, we work with what's, what's available. So um, I don't know what Councilwoman Jones is talking about in that issue, but.
Point of order, Council President.
If I say it's raining, she gonna say it's sunny, but.
Department from their spot when they were, when they had the uh, the, the uh, an event. So don't sit there and tell.
You know what? You are full of it. You are so full of it.
Hey, well, listen guys. We're not here to argue back and forth, like, so, so here, Mr. Harry. Go through all your points. You'll be able to go through them, ask your questions without interference, without any other comments so that you can get through them. But we can avoid going back and forth, that will save us the time, uh, instead of being here all night.
People not gonna come in here and lie, it's not gonna save us some time, cause I'm not gonna sit here and have her tell a lie, do what she normally does.
Yeah, what's your point of order, uh, Mr. Jones?
Uh, the uh, insults from Mr. Harry are not needed.
I'm not, I, my opinion is my opinion.
What you're doing is being disrespectful as you usually are.
You, and you're very disrespectful, cause you're lying all the time.
So, Councilwoman Jones, the Councilmember Harry. Any insults will not be tolerated, so.
Mr. President?
Count, I, I agree, Councilman Harry, you have right to, to.
And if she's gonna tell a lie, she, I'mma, I'mma call it a lie.
Yeah, listen, listen. We are all professionals. We were elected to govern with professionalism and character. I agree, everyone has an opinion. And they can state their opinion, uh, but we have to work together. And this is gonna be a very long meeting if we just keep on jumping in and going back and forth. Now, you may not like what somebody else says. But that's fine. The person has a right to say it as long as they're not um. Uh, bullying or insulting another council member. Um, so with that being said. For everybody on the call, uh, there should be no insults. You cannot call anybody else a liar. If you don't believe someone's telling truth, that's fine. Uh, let's, let's, let's just move on so we get this meeting, um, let's have, so that we can have a productive meeting. Without going back.
Again, it's not gonna be productive if she's gonna keep on coming in and telling us.
I understand, and also want you to know that other people have their opinions as well, and I respect.
Right now, and I respect her opinion. I, I, she can give her opinion. I have no problem with anybody's, I'm the first one to give you the right to free speech. You can say what you wanna say. If she wanna call me a liar, she can call me a liar. That's, I don't care, that's her opinion, and I can respond in kind. But that's, that's, that's what freedom of speech is all about. My opinion is my opinion. I'm not saying.
Understand, so we're not gonna call each other a liar, but what, how we're gonna get through this is. I'm just gonna give you the floor to go through all your questions uninterrupted, and then once you're done, we'll move on. Uh, before we do that, I see Councilman Ferguson's hand, and then we'll go back to you, Councilman, uh, Vice President Ferguson.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the um, gratis issue, uh, as it pertains to the um, elected officials. And it, it would be my opinion. That um, the elected officials being, uh, I'm referencing the city of Glen Arden elected officials. Which would be the council and, and, and the mayor, um. That if they uh, if the goal room is needed, whether it's a Friday or Saturday or even a Wednesday, whenever. For an event that has been previously scheduled and it is in the budget. Or whether it has been amended in the budget, if it's a, a, uh, an event that is budgeted. Um, and had been approved in the budget, then there, to me, I, I don't believe that. I mean, who, who would pay for um, the rental of the room if we just have only one um. One gratis there, but we have several, um, we, as far as the councils, we have several events. Um, and. I just don't believe that, um, that we should be, be limited to one. God, one gratis event, if it's, if it's in the budget, approved in the budget. The other thing is, I don't believe that. That um, any council member would, uh, or elected official would come in and, and um, I would hope not. You know, I think that, you know, because they're elected officials, that they can uh, go in and, and uh. Bogart and put some, you know, override someone's uh, previous uh, reserve, reservation. So I don't think that was, would be the case, um, and I really don't think, um, Mr. Harris was. Uh, meaning that, um, we respect those that have already previously booked, um, the goal room. But I mean, I just can't, I, I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to understand if that was the case that. Um, the rules are saying, hypothetically, the, the holiday party, so. If, if I, you know, throwing a holiday party. And I'm, I'm throwing a holiday party, they say I'm doing a Hill City, so I can only do one or the other. Is that what it was saying, um, Ms. Bun?
Yeah, I just wanted us to like basically look at the calendar. We, and on Saturdays, that's one of the busiest week. You know, weekdays, um, to run out, um, so just, just to actually just um, look at the calendar. And it, it may possibly help if you guys provide me with your calendar of events. At the beginning of the year, and we can all get together and we can see how it will, how it will line out for the, for the rest of the year. Because if we have out of four weeks out of a month on a Saturday. And we have two events from council that mean that we're only getting two. Guests are only getting two Saturdays out of that month. So we're not really making money on a Saturday. That's all I'm saying. So just to look at the calendar. And, and, and maybe it will, it will help. At, at the beginning of the year, when everyone can submit, you know, their, their events, and we can try to outline it then. Um, instead of like having two or three um, events out of the month. And only the guests are only having one, and, and we're trying to collect money to come into the event space. And we're not getting that. That's all I'm saying, um, just to take considerate of that.
Okay, I do understand that, um, and I, I don't see, but that's a problem, cause for the most part, I know with the council, um. Our events are, you know, standard, whether it's two straight days. You know, in the year and they're pretty much around the same time of the month. I mean, for myself, um, you know, once we had the holiday party, I think the next week. We booked our dates for twenty, you know, for this, for this one, so that wouldn't be a problem, um, thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Harry, I said it will come to you after Vice Press Ferguson. Uh, so we're back at you, Councilwoman Jones. I'll come to you after Councilman Harry has gone through his list of questions.
Like I said, so I think that needs to come out. I don't think it's, we should be limited to no non-time, because this is saying non-prime time slots. During off-season, and I think that needs to come out, cause we. Pick prime time spots, cause we want people to come. So I think that needs to come out of here, um. Uh, next item is under forms of payment, um, it says. A thirty-five dollar fee will be assessed for checks from the city of Glen Arden, not cash, but in ninety days or re, or for reissued checks. How are you going to get thirty-five dollars from somebody who has not paid, who has not cashed that check? Or if it's reissued, why would you charge him thirty-five dollars for reissuing the check? I don't, I'm not understanding it.
So.
We, the liability is on us. We owe them money and we're gonna take money from them that we owe them. A refund is a refund. You can't take money from them because you gotta reissue a check.
So I believe that was supposed to be for like, um, N S Fs or something like that, that they will receive a, a fee of the N F. And that's something that I might have to look at to reword it, but that was only for if a N S F, like a non-sufficient funds come back from a check. And then that's when they'll get, um, charged that amount of money.
I didn't miss, this says, this says. A thirty-five dollar fee will also be assessed for checks from the city of Glen Arden, not cashed. Within ninety days or for reissued checks.
I'll revisit that and look at all of that again.
So, Mr. President, you wanna, you wanna put that up?
But it's up, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was still up. Do you see it now?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Um, and that was, yeah. But see, right there under forms of payment, where it says checks from the city of Glen Arden. So the checks that we cut that are not cashed, they're gonna be charged thirty-five dollars if they don't cash within ninety days. Then they do have an N S F fee, which I understand that. But um, yeah, I don't understand uh, that other fee. Alright, I guess uh, we go down to security deposit. Now, they has on there, the usage policy, and it said, uh, deposits may be forfeited as liquidated damages for the following breaches. Of the rental agreement and usage policy, ticket sales, cash exchange or premises, room capacity, blah, blah, blah. But what it doesn't have on there is physical damage to the structure. As one of the, cause somebody's gonna hold you to this. They gonna say what, it doesn't say anything about my deposit being forfeited. I didn't do any of these things. But physical damage um, to the structure, I think should be listed on there so that they know outright that there's gonna be, if there's damage to that, to that space. Then they're gonna, they're gonna lose their security deposit. So I'm not sure why it's not on there, um.
It states any damages, fees or fines that are incurred or conjunction with the renters' events will, which, which exude the amount of the deposit. And the responsible.
Go back up to the top and go do your five things and say they didn't do that. They didn't, they, they, they didn't violate any of those. They may have broke a wall out, but that wasn't any of the other stuff. That wasn't cleanup. Uh, room capacity violation, ticket sales on premises. It wasn't any of that. I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a, have something, you need to really spell it out for people. I think it needs to be a number six. That says any physical damage to the structure. As uh, one of the usage policies, but. You, you can deal with that when you go to court, if you try to keep it and they say they didn't do anything, but. I think that needs to be added to it, um. Uh, we go to page five. So it says, uh, where it says, please note that our cancellations will occur. A cancellation processing fee of fifty dollars, even if they cancel within the four. Before the ninety days period. They're gonna get charged fifty dollars, but you're gonna refund them all of their, it says you wanna refund them all of their. The, all of their, the payments and deposit, they get a full refund if they cancel within a certain amount of period, in a certain period. But now here, you're saying you wanna get a cancellation processing fee of fifty dollars, so I'm not understanding that, um. Why are we charging them fifty dollars if they canceled in ti- in time, and they, and they do a full refund? According to your schedule right there, one, two and three. Now I can see if it's a fifty, if they, if where it's the ninety to thirty day, you can charge them a processing fee, but if they do that before ninety days, why should they be? Why should they lose anything? I mean, I'm not understanding the whole process and fee of fifty dollars. What is your, what, what, what rule, who has that rule? Cause I know they, they pull these rules from everywhere else and throw them in this, in this piece of, in this document. Cause it's the same document that the last one, that last one, last person uh, threw out here. So why are we charging a fifty dollar fee if? They cancel more than ninety days before. And the room can be rented again. I'm not understanding that.
Well, in some cases, it can't be. It might be too late.
I can see they're too late. I can see if this, if it's the ninety to thirty day calendar days. I can see they're too late. I can see if this, if it's the ninety to thirty day calendar days prior, they get, they getting back fifty percent of their deposit. Then they, they can, they can lose, they, they, it might be a fifty dollar processing fee incurred in that. I mean, a fifty dollar, yeah, fifty dollar processing fee, oh, it's less than thirty days, a fifty dollar processing fee, but if it's the uh, if it's the, the, the first one. The booking date to eighty-nine days prior, it says full deposit refunded. Why they being charged, if it says full deposit refunded, why would they be charged a fifty dollar processing fee?
Did you want me to answer?
I would like to, to just ask you.
Um, well, I've seen plenty of times where people um, just come in just to hold a date. And um, maybe don't have any attentions on uh, booking the room or just to hold it till they find something else. Um, so I think we need to put something in there, um, just in case, you know, just for, for us. It, I believe on finance, um, actually have to accrue a cost for bank cost or whatever. Um, when they, when we doing the cancellation. So I wanted us to actually have something in place where people just not saying, okay, just, just to do it is just a hold. But um, just to know that they're serious about the actual um, rental um, agreement when they do it.
I guess my thing is if they put down a deposit, then they're serious at that time. And if they change their mind and they do it within a, a lot of time to get a full deposit. Why would they be charged fifty dollars and, and what, what expense is fifty dollars in the, in the, in the finance department? I know you, you know, you have your credit card processing fee, which is maybe two percent, two or three percent. And then if they cut a check, and that's by what, three cent, four cent, I think it's ten cent. Process a check at SunTrust, at Truus. So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the processing fee is. I mean, I mean, it, it seemed like it's just a money grab to me. I can understand if it's, if, if, if items two or three are done. But when you're saying you get your full deposit back, somebody's gonna be looking for their full deposit, not minus fifty dollars. So um. You need to, yeah, I just don't, I just don't see that, because you're not getting back your full deposit. You're getting back your full deposit minus fifty dollars. So I think that's an issue too, that needs to be looked at. All right, um. Here we go down to day of rental on page five. I guess this is confusing. It says a minimum of thirty to one hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted. Prior to the event start time to allow for setup and at the end to complete breakdown of the facility. Who are you talking about? For your people? Or for the renter?
I'm talking about for the renter.
Okay, so then it says. Due to liability issues, no one including the contract holder will be allowed inside until the start of the contract time. So if you're gonna give them, if they're gonna be in there thirty minutes before. How they gonna be in thirty minutes before and then not be allowed in there until the start of the contract time?
That's for their guests. So the only people that should be allowed in the room during setup time and breakdown time is only the renter. And this, and the setup crew or the, the people that's actually breaking down and setting up during that time.
But it says due to liability issues, no one, including the contract holder, so that's the renter. Will be allowed inside until the start of the contract time, contracted time.
So that just, the, the contract holder needs to be removed.
Yeah, then it's be taken out. Okay, now it says all activities related to the renters' event decorating, deliveries and setup and breakdown must be completed within the rental period. If anyone enters before the contracted period, the renter will be held liable. Okay, this again, if you're gonna give them a minimum of thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted. Prior to the event start time to allow for setup and at the end to complete breakdown of the facility. Why are they gonna be held liable if you got people in there working to help decorate and deliver and set up? I'm not understanding that.
Where are we looking at?
Uh, right underneath the one I just, um. Right underneath the one that's highlighted, the next paragraph, all activities related to the renters' event decorating, deliveries and setup and breakdown must be completed within the rental period. If anyone enters before the contracted period, the renter will be held liable.
Meaning the, meaning the guest. So it's just verbiage that I need to just add in verbiage there.
All activities, it says all activities related to the renters' event decorating, deliveries and setup and breakdowns must be completed. Within the rental period. So that really doesn't need to be there, because you already said, guess I'm allowed in there at the top. If any, please note for the same day floor plan and rent would, would occur. So what is the same day floor plan change? What do you consider a floor plan change?
The same day as the event.
No, what, what, what do you, what is, what constitutes a floor plan change? What do you have to do? Is it adding tables, moving chairs?
Tables, it could possibly mean um, someone bringing um, extra furniture in. Um, it can, any of that.
Will occur an additional fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. So if somebody brings in furniture for their event. That they brought in, why are we charging them a hundred and fifty dollars? There's a floor plan change. I'm not getting that. I could see if your people were doing it, maybe if your people were doing it. But I just, I don't understand the floor plan change, because sometimes, you know. Uh, moving a table from one side to the other should not constitute a floor plan change. I, I can see if you're gonna change the whole layout, move the stage from one end to the other and all this other stuff. But um, yeah, that floor plan change, I don't, I don't get it. You know. All right, uh. Let's see, the next item, we go to page six. Item number thirteen. The decorator, wedding coordinator may not enter the hall. Again, this one fair to comply. So again, if they. I'm not understanding this not entering the room at certain times. I just don't get it, because if people have these events, they need assistance, they need help. And you're saying now the wedding coordinator cannot even enter until the contracted start time. A wedding coordinator who's coordinating the wedding can't, can't, can't come into the room because the renter is already in there? That makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, I, I guess my thing, I, 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 geez, oh, go ahead. You can answer that. I, I, I'm not understanding this.
This states that it, um, the hall until the contract start time. So whatever start, whatever the rental agreement states for that seven hour time period. Whatever their setup time period, that's when the decorator, that's when the um, the caterer. Um, and whoever else, the event decor, furniture, you know, company that comes in. That, that's when they're, they're set to come in during that allotted timeframe. Not, not of that timeframe, um, but in, around that, that's, that, those timeframes, that's it.
Okay, but on previous sheet, you said at the day of the rental, a minimum of thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted prior to the event start time to allow for setup. And at the end to complete breakdown of the facility. So now you're saying they can't enter in until start time. So this, see, this is where all this confusion coming. I'm gonna tell you that, that, my problem with this is that when you start pulling stuff from other people's rules and regulations. This is how you get this stuff all jumbled up, because you're contradicting yourself again. Either they're gonna have thirty minutes to come in and set up and your wedding coordinator and everybody can come in with you, which they should be able to do, because you need more than one person to help you set up. Or they can't, or they're just gonna get seven hours and they gotta do everything within that seven hours, but you're saying you're gonna give them thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes to do some setup.
So, Mr. Harry.
I'm trying to understand this.
So I get what you're saying. So let me just add the how I understand it. So a person, and, and Ms. Bun, you correct me if I'm wrong. A person comes in, in the contract, they have the room for seven hours. Within that seven hours is the contract, is the setup time and breakup time. And you have the event, actual event time. So I have an event, it's seven hours, I'm renewing my vows. So the contract says that I have it from uh, you know, twelve to seven. Yeah, twelve to seven. So at twelve o'clock, I can come in there, my wedding coordinator could come in there. Uh, any other planners or setup or caterers can come in there at twelve o'clock. The event starts at, I don't know, uh, one thirty. Um, and then at one thirty, that's when the guests can come in. And anytime between that twelve o'clock and one thirty, guests are not allowed, because there's a liability with the setup and breakdown. But that my contract states that I have seven hours. And if I want people to come in before that seven hours, then that's a, that's another time slot that I pay for. So, Ms. Bun, is that correct?
That is correct.
Hey, you know what? You know, you know, I'm really getting tired of, I'm getting tired of this ping pong and back and forth, because Ms. Bun, you said that is correct, but your rules are not saying that. Now, as, as a renter, I'm gonna look at your rules and regulations and it says. A minimum of thirty hour, thirty minutes to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted prior to, prior to the event start time. To allow for setup in the end, and at the end to complete breakdown of the facility. Now, if everybody's like me and gonna read their agreements in their contract, they're gonna be like, I get thirty minutes before this event to set up. Thirty, thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes.
It, that's depending on what type of an event that you're having.
That's not what you're, but see, that's not what you're saying here.
Can, can I?
Saying it depends on.
Ms., uh, Councilman Harry, let her finish, please.
So that thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes is based off of what type of an event that you're, I'm having. In the rental agreement, that is stated there. I, is broken down in the rental agreement of how, how much time that you, you, you get. Also, um, with repasses, it's, it, it very, it's thirty, it's a, um, it, it varies. It, it changes from just the normal private event um, setup timeframe. So that's why I had thirty to a hundred, that's why that timeframe, it, it varies that way. So I, I'm not understanding your, your, where you, what you're trying to get from me.
I guess my point is, I'm reading what you have here, and as somebody who's gonna rent this venue. You're saying under the rules and regulations, a minimum of thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted prior to the event start time. But then you have over on the next page on, on number thirteen, the decorator, the wedding coordinator may not enter the hall until the contract start time. So you got a, a wedding coordinator and a decorator, where you say they can come in thirty minutes before. Then you got on another page saying where they can't come in until the start time. And this is saying allotted prior to event start time. And that's why I'm saying it's, it's confusing. Yes, confusing. You either, either they can or they can't. So I'm just trying to, my thing is it need to be uniform, but again, I'm telling you, this thing needs to be looked through, because again, it's not, it's all out of sync. And this is what happens when you pull stuff out of, from other people's contracts and throw them into your rules and regulations, based on this, this why this is the hard part. Um, again, this minimum of thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes prior to, prior to means before the event, and it says prior to the event start time. So you get thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes, and you got a wedding, of course, you're gonna want your, your coordinator and your decorator in there. If they get thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes prior to the event. I, I'm not talking about the, the amount of time, I'm talking about the fact that they can come in there prior to the event. But yet thirteen says the wedding coordinator can't come into, or the decorator can't come into the hall until the contracted start time. So if I saw, if my event starts at noon, they can't come until noon to start decorating. But yet you're saying I got thirty minutes prior to the start time to come in there and set up.
So, Councilman Harry, but, but the other, the other point, so I have thirteen, which one are you comparing it to?
Comparing it to page five. Where it says a minimum of thirty to twen, to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted prior to the event start time. So if you're gonna take that out and just say they can start, they got that block and that's when they're gonna do it. Or you wanna change thirteen and say that the coordinator can come in thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes prior to, based on whatever they're spending.
So, but Councilman Maher, so this one says. Uh, if I have this correct, you're saying thirty minutes, thirty to a hundred and twenty minutes should be allotted prior to the event start time. So if I have a wedding starting at three o'clock, then um, then they can, uh, from three o'clock, what's that? Two o'clock, uh, one o'clock, they're coming at one o'clock to, um, what is this? Yeah. So, but this says event start time, what you're talking about down here.
Tina says.
The contract start time, those are two different times.
Those are the same, those are the same thing.
Okay, so maybe I'm wrong.
The, the, the contract and the event start timing the same thing.
No, no, not the way, I, uh, Ms. Bun, could you define whether those are same thing or not? Contract time versus the event time, are those, uh, is it, is Ms. Erin correct that that they're the same time?
The, the event time is, let's give example. So you, we, we have seven hours, the, the client gets seven hours, that's inclusive of your setup, it's inclusive of your breakdown. So let's say the event is for four hours, they'll come in two hours prior for their event. Their contracted time, let's say, um, they get two hours for the setup. Then your event time is your event time, and then you get one hour on the back end for breakdown. The contracted time is just the whole allotted time. The seven hours. The event time. Starts.
If I say my event is twelve to seven. What then? I get thirty minutes on the board.
So if your event is from twelve to seven. So you get, um, you'll come in, your, you'll come in, your, your setup crew, all of that will come in at, um. Ten, if, if you, if your event time is four hours. And then um, your breakdown time is, um, is by seven o'clock.
So if it's twelve to seven, they come in, they can come in at ten AM.
Because that's your setup timeframe.
That's my setup time. So then again, this thirteen.
Your event is starting at twelve o'clock.
So then this, this, so then again, they would, my coordinator would need to be in there at ten o'clock to do setup. So that's what I'm saying, you know, if my event is from, from twelve to seven, I'm gonna have a long seven hour, seven hour weddings, I'm gonna get married and have a reception. All in one swoop, and I'm gonna start it at twelve, I'm getting married at twelve, so my setup time, you're gonna give me two hours on the front end, say, you know, to set up. So then my coordinator needs to be in there at ten, but according to this rule and regulation on thirteen, she can't come in until. The contract to start time, which will be twelve.
That, that's not it.
That is it, because the contract and the event time will be the exact same thing.
No, it's not.
It will be, because if, if I sign a contract and say I wanna use the, I wanna use the room from twelve to seven, and my event starts at twelve. And it ends at seven, that's when my event starts.
Your contract will not, your contract will not say that.
Huh?
Your contract will never say that, Ms. Erin.
It, it will say that, because that's what I, that's what I'm, that, it will say that, because it, you're gonna tell me what I can, I'm gonna book twelve hours, I'm, you're gonna tell me when my event can start. Is that what you're saying? So I, you wanna tell me, I can, I can rent this room, but you wanna tell me when my event gonna start? I need seven hours to get married, so I got twelve, I'm, I'm, I'm getting married, the preacher's gonna be there at twelve noon to marry me. And it's gonna end at seven after the reception. So at twelve noon, I need to have my stuff set up.
Okay.
The contract is gonna say, she gonna ask me, what time is your event? Twelve to seven. What, well, what block are you renting? Twelve to seven. I'm doing that seven hour block.
No, that would not be the case.
That would be the case. She just said that.
Hours. Your event is not gonna be seven hours.
You know, you can't tell me what my event is gonna be. See, that's, that's the problem you have.
One second.
Tell me how long my wedding gonna be.
Or council president, he's just being argumentative.
Point of, point of order, Mr. President, Council President, because you tell Miss John to shut her mouth, remind her business and keep out of my session.
Council, Councilmember Harry, you're out of water.
I'm not out of water. She should, she should, she should have just keep her mouth shut.
No, she, every council member has a right to a point of.
Okay, so when I say, when I just say, don't, don't interrupt me.
No, no, but this will be your first warning.
Well, you know what? You're gonna have to get rid, put me out, because I'm not gonna sit here and let her keep running her bad mouth, because then I just.
All right, so, Councilman Harry, I'm really trying to be lenient, but that, that, that is an insult, so please. I do, I just, I, yes, it is, Councilman Harry.
That's my personal opinion.
Councilman Harry, look, I accept she worked with me, because I would rather you stay in this meeting. Councilman Harry, look, I accept she worked with me, because I would rather you stay in this meeting than for me to remove you from the meeting.
Well, then have Miss Jones keep her comments to herself.
Now, she is a council member, just like you.
No, because first of all, Mr. President, do I, do I, do I not have the floor?
You, uh, one second.
Do I have the floor?
No, if, if someone points of order, then I have to recognize the point of order, Councilman Harry, and you know that.
Recognize the point of order, she just came in and is commenting.
I, I, now, now I agree with that. Yeah, Councilman Harry, she has a right to a point of order. Right to a point of order. Councilman Harry.
Before she spoke.
Councilman Harry, like I said, that was your warning, please.
Mr. President, I'm asking you a question, did you recognize her point of?
I did not recognize her point of.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, but you still insulted her, so the, the warning still stands.
So does the one stand for her for interrupting me without, you recognizing a point of order?
Councilman Harry, I ask that you be respectful of Ms. Bond, I understand you have questions and you have a right to ask those questions.
I have a right to ask questions anyway, I need to ask.
No, no, you do not have a right.
And I'm not gonna sit here, because you like somebody, don't mean I gotta sit here and solve so, but question.
Uh, you don't have to have self questions, but you have to be professional, respectful.
I'm being right, professional, respectful, I'm asking a question and I, I'm asking her to answer him, I didn't ask Miss Jones to comment, Miss Jones is not running the goal wrong.
Councilman Harry, so there's the warning, please proceed with your questions. And if there's another interruption or you insult somebody else, then I'm gonna kind of remove you from the meeting.
Um, and I will pick it up at the next meeting, um, so let's go on, um. Again, as I was saying. You cannot tell me, or anyone else, or Ms. Bond, cannot tell me how long my event is gonna be and how long I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to run. If I'm gonna rent that block for seven hours and I say my event starts at twelve and it's gonna end at seven, you can't tell me I'm not gonna have no seven hour, eight, longer. I know somebody that had a twelve hour event. A twelve hour event and I go, so you cannot tell me how long my event should, should not be. That's not your place to do, I mean, the room is supposed to be rented by the person, they're renting, and they're gonna use it for what they wanna use it for, so if I'm gonna get in there at twelve, my event gonna end at seven. So you're gonna sit there and turn away money because they're not gonna do it the way you want it done, is that what you're saying, uh, Ms. Bond? Cause you just said that no one's gonna have a seven hour event, or Mr., Mr. President say that. I don't know who y'all, I mean, I don't know which I, who, what people you deal with, but I do know that happens.
But, Councilman Harry, can I ju- can I just, I'm trying to explain what I think you're missing. And so I, I, I don't think the point is I can tell you how long your event should be. So if you come into my establishment looking for business. And you say that, hey, you wanna have a seven hour wedding. Well, then you will know that there needs to be a setup and breakdown, so it's not a seven hour wedding. So the contract that I go into with you will be more for maybe like, what, seven and nine, and eleven hours. So you'll have two hours before the event and two hours after to set up and break down. That is what she is saying. So it will just be, it, it will be in your particular contract.
But you see, the problem I'm having is that, instead of looking at this as you should be looking at, that's what I'm saying, so thirteen is not right. Item thirteen is not right. The decorator can come in prior to the start of the contract time, if you're having a seven hour wedding. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. So either you're gonna take that out and leave in what, um, what you have in the other one, or you're going to change the other one and say your start time, you gotta do everything within that block.
This is, this is right, the decorator and wedding coordinator may not enter the hall until the contract start time, but I don't, I don't get it, that's right.
That's right. The contract and the event time start, they're all the same thing.
They're not.
They, it is.
No, you, Councilman Harry, your event is, in your scenario, your event is from twelve to seven, right? That's the two, so the contract that you will enter will be from ten to nine. So you can have two hours in the front and two hours at the end to set up and break down, that's your contract time. Ten in the morning to nine o'clock at night is your contract time, your event starts at twelve PM.
Okay, so you're saying I'm gonna pay for a block, um, so my contract is gonna be different from your rules and regulations when I, when I pay for it.
No.
The contract, so the contract's not gonna, not, not gonna reflect the rules and regulations of the seven times, so you're gonna have two times on your contract, is that what you're saying? So my, when I sign a contract, you're gonna have a, a, a twelve hour block, even though I'm paying for a seven hour block.
No, uh, uh, this was just for, for the sake of your scenario.
For my scenario, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so the block is seven hours, uh, Ms. Bond, can you correct me if I'm wrong, the block is seven hours, can anybody rent the room for more than seven hours?
The, with the, with the, um, rules and regulations now, they can add additional hours, but it is a seven hour block.
Yeah, so you have your seven hour blocks, and for your scenario, you're saying that you wanna have a seven hour wedding. So that means that in your contract, you will have to pay for extra hours, it will be in your contract. I, on the other hand, I may only wanna have a, a hour wedding, I don't have that much time. So my, my contract will look completely different from yours. I may not need to buy the extra block to set up and break down, but you have, let's say you wanna have, you know, this, you know, um, uh, ancestry wedding where you have, you know, some people have like, uh, for an African wedding, then a traditional wedding, and then, you know, another something after that. Well, you already know that it's gonna be long, so you're gonna pay in your contract, you're gonna know what you need and you're gonna pay for whatever it is that you need. It's not different from the rules.
Hey, so now you're saying you gotta pay for this, this, this thirty to a hundred twenty minutes, you gotta pay for that?
No, I did not say that.
So that's what you're, that's what you just said.
For, for clarity, yes and no. So if the contract.
Okay, so hold on, before you go, before you go on further, so what kind of contract, if the contract is not that clear. Yes and no is not an answer, that you need to pay that up for what you actually gotta pay for, what is gonna, how, how this is gonna, how this is gonna work. Cause again, somebody's gonna say, oh, my coordinator can't come in until the start time. And they're gonna tell, and they're gonna tell anybody who's with them that my contract is from twelve to seven, so you can't get in until twelve.
Correct.
The decorator, for a wedding that starts at twelve.
Oh, you, I think you're missing it, Councilman.
But see, that's what I'm saying, this is all, this is not, it's not clear. A contract should, should be clear, either you wanna have, it's, it's just that you got seven hours on the rules and regulations, seven hours, you got a half hour that, for, uh, setup and an hour for breakdown, that's what it's supposed to be. You need to put, that needs to be in, that needs to be in your rules and regulations or in your, in your, uh, in your, um, fee schedule. To make it clear that somebody can come in a half hour before and thirty minutes after. But you're saying you're gonna decide on what, what event it is, to decide who gets what, or whatever. And I'm, uh, like, you don't do contracts like that, you sit there, the, 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 every event, you get thirty minutes to set up or whatever, and so many, so many minutes to break down.
Per- perhaps.
That's where it needs to be.
Perhaps terms, a definition of terms, we can introduce that into a contract, so people know what the difference is.
I can't just put it in the day and go speed schedule, just say, say, you get thirty minutes before and then an hour after, whatever the heck it is, or however you wanna.
So I see Councilwoman Giam saying, maybe she can provide clarity, uh, uh, Councilwoman Giam.
Thank you, Council President and Councilman, um, Herring, um, I'm going to try to offer my, my tidbit here. So two different terms, contract includes setup and breakdown. And events, contract, the term contract is all inclusive, it includes setup, breakdown, and event. Event time is the time when you're expecting guests to arrive. So if we're looking at an event time that starts at twelve o'clock, the contract, the contract will include ten PM to whatever the event time and breakdown is. So that's one, again, event is when the event, when guests arrive, when, if it's a party, when, when everything, people are allowed to come in. Contract again is solely when you have the vendors or whoever's coming in to decorate or to actually make sure that everything is okay. So that's one. The other thing is, I'm understanding it, is there is a max right now, um, for seven hours rental. Which is, which again includes s- setup and breakdown. Contract, seven hours, period. Now, if, of, if I am a guest, and I'm sorry, if I am someone who's interested in renting for more than seven hours, like what Councilman Herring is saying. If I am interested in having a seven hour event, then I will have to pay for an additional amount of time for the setup and breakdown to be included in the contract. Again, that's if the event, if the wedding itself, the guest arrive and the guest leave with it, and within seven hours. Then that means it's, the event is seven hours, but I need a decorator, I need whoever the vendors are, the DJ or whatever to come and set up, so that means I will have to pay for additional amount of hours for my contract. And again, contract is solely when the people can, the vendors can come in. So as I'm reading number thirteen, what it's saying is, as a vendor, if I'm using Councilman Herring's example. If I have an event that's going to go on from twelve to seven, I'm going to, the wedding's about to start at twelve o'clock, at twelve o'clock. When the guests come in, guests come in, then that means I would have to get into a contract from ten, my, my, excuse me, I would have to have a contract from ten AM, and my, my decorator, my DJ, whomever, they cannot enter before ten AM. Because that's not the contractual obligation. So that's what I, I want to just offer as my take on it. So, thank you guys.
Thank you, Councilwoman Giam. Alright, Councilman Harry, are you ready to move on?
Okay, now, like I said, Councilwoman Giam explained that beautifully, she explained it, but everybody's not like Councilwoman Giam. But again, I still, still, it's, I still think thirteen in, in that section need to be, either need to be adjusted or, um, something. You know, I'm, it just doesn't, because people are gonna read it just like I read it, and even though, and again, the contract is a contract, I don't know how they write contracts. My thing is you write a contract based on your fee schedule. And if you wanna add, if you wanna add extra hours, it doesn't say you're adding extra hours, you know, if you add extra hours, they can come in early. Now, I get, I think, but if you wanna give them thirty minutes or hours to come in and set up as a, as a, as a setup time, then that should be in the fee schedule. Because again, it should say, it should say, they should, they should mirror each other, because again, people are gonna read that and be like, okay, um. I can't come in until the start time. Of the, the event start time. So, this is, if, if we having this much discussion, and we're council members, you can imagine what the renter's gonna be saying. And I, and, and my thing is, I don't like people to be, I don't think, I don't like things to be deft up to interpretation, it should be clear and concise what you're gonna get when you pay for your, pay for this room. So, that's it on that. We can move on, cause I'm, I'm tired of beating this dead horse, um. Okay, um. The next item is, oh, I, I did wanna ask a question, cause this was kinda strange to me. Um, the last item, parking and grounds, uh, if you go to page seven at the top, it says, um, all deliveries will be made through the handicap doors. Um, oh, oh, da, 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 wheelchair access is available, I'm sorry, not that one, loading and unloading, number three, go down to number three. That right there, why are we having vendors bring food across our carpet? When there's a side door, they can bring food into the kitchen, to, 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 uh, load and unload. That was, that's what the last gold room coordinator was doing, I never understood the logic in that, why would you have somebody bringing greasy food with risk and spilling it on the carpet through the dang on doors across the carpet when they can go in the side door right into the kitchen? I mean, could, and, Ms. Bond, could you explain that to me?
Um, well, they do use the, the, um, back door, um, however, they're still bringing in food in the, um, you know, risking getting food on the carpet, because they're bringing it into the gold room to set it in the areas, um, for, um, where, where the food is located. So, I mean, that's, that's just part of the carpet, um, but they are u- utilizing that, that, um, side door as well.
Bring food in the side door, or the, or the handicap door.
So, they're utilizing the, um, the side door, this where the employee entrance is.
Okay.
Applicators are coming in, but you have DJs, all of that, that will.
Them, I understand them, but I just didn't understand, like, the last one, I didn't understand her logic at all, bringing food in on the side, in the side door across the carpet, cause again, that's a longer trip to you got a more chance of spilling stuff, taking it in, than you do taking it, putting it on that service bay and putting it on a table, so. Um, you have less chance of, of solving more of the carpet, so, okay, I, I'm good, I'm good right there, just wanted to know about that. Alright, um, very rapid, so, um. Now, if you go down to capacity seating, the number at the very bottom. Full round tables with, with two hundred fifty guests, thirty two tables at eight per table. What if somebody wants ten per table?
I mean, there's not, not gonna be any space for a table.
That's different, I mean, it used to, it, it, it actually used to be ten per table. Um, even though it was kinda crowded.
Ten people can't fit at that table.
Ten people can't fit at the table, because it used to be ten per table before COVID, cause I know people used to, it used to be ten per table, then they dropped it down to six, but on COVID, then it took it back up to eight. But some people do do ten, I've, I've been to events, plenty of events where it's ten per table, I just had an event just the other day at the Weston.
Was it a bigger, was it a bigger table? Because that.
It's the same size that we have, so I mean, I mean, I was just saying, if somebody want ten per table, I mean, shouldn't that be their prerogative, I mean. I mean, that's that you have to put up, you know? I was just wondering about that, I just don't think it should be limited to no eight per table, if somebody wanna have ten per table, and maybe wanna have a little bit more space, if they, if they if they're comfortable with it and the people are comfortable with it, that's their decision to make, they're paying over two thousand dollars for the room, I don't think they should be dictated how many chairs they're gonna have around the table, as long as it ain't like, you know, twelve or thirteen and people on top of each other, but, um, they, those tables do hold ten, technically. So. Alright, um. I guess, go to the next page, page eight. I think, um, this, this available rental items. Why are we charging, why are we, why are we gonna offer available rental items? I'm thinking, and, and, and the first, at first issue is the podium with Mike, I think that should be included in the price. I don't think we should be renting, uh, extra charge for a podium and a mic. I think that should be, that, that should just be a given. I don't think, I mean, I mean, that, that's when you're just nickel and dime, and I mean, every other place you go, they probably give you a podium and a mic, but if you wanna use a, the total AV system, that's completely different. But a podium and a mic, I think that should just be standard for, um, renting this room. Again, the reason why people rent the rooms is because of the flexibility of the room and the things that it comes with it. But, um, cause otherwise, other than that, you don't get many other amenities, but I think, um, um, yeah, all of these other items, do we have all of these items?
Um, we have the majority of this stuff, we're, we're looking with, um, I'm looking to purchase, this is, um, hold on, if you go down some more, actually, we do, we have all of these items. Projected, we don't have the projector in the stand yet, um, and the projector screen, but I'm looking to get those items in for AV purposes.
So, so the renovations that y'all plan, that, that y'all are thinking about doing don't include an AV system?
It did, I included that in there.
And we're still in about projector and the screens, I'd like get that doing free too. But, um, I'm just saying, I just think, I do think the podium and a mic with the mic should be included in, in, uh, be a freebie. I think that's just nickel and dime right there, you know, I, I really do, um. I, I'm not still understanding why we offer the other stuff either, because people, most people bring their own stuff in there, um, and do, are we still giving our paper tape across?
We are not, no.
Why not?
Um, because it costs, and we have been, um, we've been, uh, running out. Either the client has been bringing in their linen, or they have been running from us, which we have been, um, uh, making money there.
Running from us.
Running the tablecloths.
So, the tablecloths are much cheaper than and I think they, I think they actually in the original, in original option, tablecloths are included in original, in original, uh, rules and regulations, tables and cards are included, so I don't understand that, and my thing is, so you're telling people they gotta bring their own tablecloths in? Or rent them from us?
I'm giving them the option where they can bring their own tablecloths in, or they can rent them from, from. I'm giving them the option where they can bring their own tablecloths in, or they can rent them from, from the city of Glen Arden, yes.
Yeah, I don't think that's right. I think you need to off those. First of all, the ta, paper tablecloths, they've never been discontinued. Because the rules and regulations that are in place now requires people to have tablecloths if they want tablecloths. That's what the rules and regulations say. That's a decision that the council should have made, that it could be discontinued. Um. And second of all, to sit there and have those tables out there. And then force people to rent tablecloths from us. I don't think that's good. Not, not at ten dollars a pop. I think it's in the ten dollars a pop, ten dollars a table. Is it ten dollars a table for the tablecloths?
Yes, yeah.
And then it gotta be cleaned afterwards. How much does it cost to clean them?
I have been cleaning them till we get a washer and dryer.
You've been cleaning them until we get a, where, where are we gonna put a washer and dryer?
So, that's what Tanika was looking at when she came in.
Okay. And so, between the tablecloths and the water and electricity that we're gonna use for these tablecloths. Is gonna be an, an additional expense versus disposables, which you, which are twelve cent apiece. That you can take off and throw away and not have to worry about anything and worry about washing.
I don't think that they were paying twelve cents apiece. I think that they were buying them by the bulk and they were.
About a bulk, but by bulk, it was about twelve cent apiece. Probably, I think it's twelve or twenty cent, one of the two. I know it was, it was, it was cents per tablecloth, I think it was. By the bulk, by the, by the bulk that they were getting it by, which were much cheaper than. What you're doing, what we're doing now. So, I still think that this should be offered. I think this should be, and I think that should be something that the people, the, the person decide whether they want them or not. Again. You have those tables out there. I've seen people coming in and tables are not covered at all. Um, and so if the people don't wanna use the tablecloths, they just have a bare table?
Uh, since I've been at the, the gold room, the, the tables have not been, um, bare.
So, they, so they, so they paid the ten dollars for the, for the cloth?
They will, they have, they don't have a problem with paying the, actually, they, they don't have a problem because it's already done before they get there. So, they rather have a solution where everything is completely done. Um, and they don't have to worry about anything other than possibly maybe putting a centerpiece on the table if that's what they choose to do. Um, however, if not, they don't have a problem of bringing their own, um, tablecloths in either.
We're supposed to be high end, okay. All right, okay, that's, that's another, that's another thing. I think we need to look at that. All right, on to page nine. Okay, are we at number one, catering service options? And this is a sticking point for me again, because again, it sounds like. We, you want all food to be catered or bought in by from a, 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 what's called a company? Another company, a, a, a prepared food company. Is that what this is? Is that what you're suggesting in these rules?
Yes.
I don't agree with that. I agree that, and I think we've already said this like three times already, that people can bring in their own food if they sign a waiver. And I don't, I'm not understanding why this hasn't been changed yet. I mean, this is like the third time, I think the third or fourth time, we brought this up and it has not been changed yet. And I know majority of the council supported it. At, at last time, I thought majority of council supported it. So, I'm not understanding why this hasn't been changed. Ms., Ms. Bond?
So, when you're saying bring in own food, what, what does that consist of?
Bring in their own food. If somebody wanna bring in their own food, they're bringing their own food. It might not come from wagons, it might not come from. Uh, uh, what's it called? Somebody may wanna bring their own food. A lot of times it repasses, people bringing their own food because it's a repass in this last minute. And people cook and bring food in.
So, if, if you look at the report that I provided, um, when I did my research. The majority of the places that, that hold repasses, um, or the venues, they don't bring in, um. Their own food. It's, it's, it's a licensed caterer or it have to be in a, a, a licensed, a, a. A, a licensed kitchen. So, basically like a Sardis or something like that. Um, there's not a lot of places that's bringing in their own food. And I, I have not had any setbacks with, with clients when they come in, um. Um, having a, a caterer because they are aware of that being a standard in this area.
Um, so you're telling people who rent now that they have to have a caterer?
Yeah.
You are?
They not having a caterer than a, a Sardis or something like that, yes.
But that's not in the rules.
What's in the rules?
The rules is that they can bring in outside food, as long as they sign a waiver. That's what's in the current rules. Does not require catering only. It says ca, catering is an option. But it doesn't have to be catering. But I, I'm just saying again. That, um, again, I don't care what other people do. That's what, that's my biggest problem with these rules and regulations. I don't care what other, other facilities do. You know, I know for a fact that every county facility out here. Like I say, uh, uh, Ms. Wilson had an event, which I went to over at the community, over at the rec center, they rented a whole. Uh, basketball court. And they brought food in there. And they just had, said to sign a wa, sign a waiver. Went to a venue down here on All Mall Road, it's a recreation facility down there, a rental space down there. They only, they brought food in there to sign a waiver. I went to my nephew's wedding up in Bellesville to a facility up there that they rented. And they brought their own food in there and they only had to sign a waiver. So, this catering thing is just a bunch of nonsense. Cuz everybody does not have the money for a caterer. That's the whole attraction with the gold room is that you have option and there's flexibility in it. And I know the county allows waivers, so I don't wanna hear nobody coming on here talking about the county requires this and the county requires that, cuz the county does it themselves. Only thing they don't, the only, only room they don't do it is the main ballroom where they actually had required caterers, like the Prince George County Ballroom. Um, but a lot of them don't. I know a lot of facilities don't. Again, this is a rental space. This is not a banquet or a, a, a hall where you're cooking or anything. So, as long as they sign a waiver, they should be able to bring their food in. And I think that we're just trying to, once again, be something that we're not. Eliminate certain people from being able to rent a, a nice facility and have a nice event. And I'm not understanding why it hasn't been changed after it's been told three times to change it. So, I guess you're just not gonna do it? Is that what it is? Cuz the council has already said it, I think, three times. And I actually was in a room when. Um, the council clerk actually told you. That the council wanted, that put in there and you said you didn't wanna do it. And I'm just, I'm trying to figure out why. After the council has, has dictated that to you.
I, I didn't hear the council tell me to do it. I heard, I, I heard the council clerk. That's not the council. The, and actually, I was waiting for this meeting to have that, so we can be clear on, on that topic.
Bond, we've had, the, the council president, when he first came on here, he said, this is like the second or third meeting we had on these rules. And at the, at the, at the second meeting, I know for a fact that the second meeting, that we specifically talked about. That having people be able to bring food in, it was a, a point, a long discussion. And so, I'm not sure why. And then when the council clerk said that, she said the council said they would like to have it in there and you said you didn't want it in there. And I was sitting right there at the desk when she, when I had, when I had the conversation, cuz she was trying to update the resolution for you.
It was up in the air.
It was not up in the air. It was, it was. It was not, Ms. Bond, don't sit there and try to tell me, don't sit there and try to call me no liar now, because I know for a fact it wasn't up in the air. Meeting, if I gotta pull, if I gotta pull. The video, I'm gonna pull the video, because I know for a fact that council members said they wanted that option. To bring food in with the waiver. And I know that for a fact and the majority said that and, and we discussed it and we said we needed to be in there. As a matter of fact, I pointed it out the second time and said it wasn't in there. And council members said they wanted it in there. And that's in my notes. And that meeting was public. You were there, you wanted, I'm assuming you wanted, we were talking about your resolution. Because it was, it was discussed. And there's, there's no way in the world you're gonna sit there and say, I, you, you did not know. I, I knew you know. Because we said it, we mentioned it three times. I know, and the last time we mentioned it, we had a lot of discussion on it. Because somebody kept on saying, oh, well, you know, nowhere in the county do you need, you need a catering license, somewhere in the county. Everybody needs something in the county. The county requires this and the county don't require it. The county do require, do allow waivers. So, um. I'm not understanding why this hasn't been changed. So, I think that needs, that needs to be addressed and that needs to be changed, that you can't bring in outside food if, as long as you sign a waiver. And we're not, we're not liable for anything. We haven't been liable for anything. And everybody has signed that waiver. And the people have been bringing in food for forty years and nobody's gotten sick. And if somebody did get sick, we're not liable because they signed the waiver saying, we're not liable. That's why we had attorney draw that up, just for that specific reason. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why it's not being put into these contracts, over and over again, and we keep on revisiting the same topic. So, I'm not sure where we're gonna go on that, but I think we need to, um. We just need to be addressed and, and, and cleaned up and, and put in there like everybody's requested. And again, that facility is not no high-end facility. It's a facility for people to come. It's a nice facility for people to have an event who can't afford the Mont's crosswinds and the PG County Ballrooms. And all the catering that's involved. So, I'm not understanding what the issue is here. And I, and I, I guess my, the, the sticking point for me is that, again. The council has already mandated what they wanted and it's not getting done. And I have a problem with that, because again, and I said this before, that that gold room belongs to, the way this government is organized is. The citizens of Glen Arden, the elected officials, and they make the direction and put the rules and regulations in place on how things are gonna move in this government. So, once it's done, once it's said, then it needs to be done. Um, we can move on to page ten. I, I, I do want that in there. I want the waiver in there. I want that put in there that you can bring your food in from outside. I don't, I don't, I'm not understanding why that affects, uh, affects the gold coordinator one way or the other. What difference does it make whether they bring it in or not?
Great. So, point of order, Councilman Herring, uh, trying to let you finish, but seemed like you, you just gonna continue to go. Um. So, two things. One, uh, well, Ms. Bond is giving the answer, please let her finish. Give her the answer, cuz you cut her off and didn't let her finish her answer. Um, I expect that you have questions, but you also have to respect that she's going to try to respond comprehensively. And so, you have to, to allow her to do that. Uh, the second thing is, on this point, let's just do a consensus right now. On whether we will want to put in a waiver, uh, for, um, what would be considered unlicensed. Food, because.
Point of order, Council President.
Uh, Councilman Jones, what's your point of order?
I've waited, uh, long to, uh, you know, to, uh, have a say, but if you look at the back of the, uh. The, uh, rules that she's given us for the gold room, she's included the county mandate where, about caterers. And she also has it in there that says Prince George's County Health Department. Uh, uh, and the local health department jurisdictions where the cater, a caterer is licensed. Caterers are required to sign catering contracts and they have to have insurance. She's also included, uh, uh. I'm sorry. It's also included on the back of the, uh. Gold room rules, Prince, what Prince George's County requires as far as catering is concerned. And, and, and where, uh, catering has to be at these events. Now, I don't know where these other places are that don't, uh, where the county has. We can't write a waiver to, uh, to violate the law. That means I can just write a waiver to give to the police chief and tell him I can run every stop sign in, in the city of Glen Arden, when that is not true. I can't write a waiver for that. You cannot write a waiver for a caterer. The county and the state of Maryland requires you to have a licensed and insured, insured cater. And Prince George's County is a stickler about that because of the fact is that they had an out, a poison outbreak. So, they wanna make sure, I mean, to, that the citizens of Prince George's County are safe from that. So, she has on the back of this res- resolution that, you know, Prince George's County requirements. Thank you, Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones, what page was that, that you were referencing?
The last two pages of the, uh, of the, um. There you go, right there. Go back one. It starts right, go back. It starts right there, that page and the, and the page behind it. It gives you Prince George's County regulations.
Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, um, thank you, Council President and my colleagues who spoke before me. I, I must echo one of the things that, um, Councilman Herring actually stated, which is that there are other facilities. In Prince George's County, I personally know of a few that actually allow, um, folks to bring things. I'm sorry, bring food outside, um, and they too can fill out a form. So, if we are looking at what Councilwoman Jones just referenced, which is what's on the screen right now that Ms. Bond has provided. My larger question is, why are we not researching the other venues that do allow? Folks to bring things outside of being catered, um, into the facilities. And they are located in Prince George's County. So, I, I say that because I am also one. And I've been a very, very vocal about it. Um, I am a proponent of having a waiver. But again, I just wanna say that this is good, but obviously there's something else, because there are other venues. Who do allow their guests to bring food that are not, that, without a catering license. And they are located in Prince George's County, so why not look and see what they've been doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Councilwoman Gill, just quickly, we can look into it. Um, it's my understanding that the county is cracking down on those people who are allowing it. That's my understanding, but we can definitely still look into it.
I hear you. And I believe also, one of the things that's interesting is I, off the top of my head is, I believe there was like even Parks and Recs, like. On their website, you're allowed to bring things outside, um. You know, outside catering food, um, and that's Prince George's County, you know, so just want to say that. And I, I can more than, um, if people have time, I can again send names of venues that actually are located in Prince George's County. That I do allow outside catering. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman G, I'm sorry, Councilman Farid?
Yes, Council, um, President, thank you. I was just gonna say, I, I actually just booked an event. At a Parks and Recreation Facility today. And I didn't even have to sign a waiver. It just asked me if I was bringing food from home or if I was going to have a caterer. I think what, how I interpret that legislation that is attached is. That if you are using a caterer, they have to be licensed, not that you must use a caterer. So, I don't know if that's something that we wanna clarify, cuz it would make sense for them to say. You know, if you're using a caterer, it has to be licensed, just like, you know, if you're gonna have a hair salon, you have to be licensed. Um, but I don't necessarily interpret that to mean that you can only have food that's from a caterer.
President, man.
Um, uh, one second, cuz I saw, um, Councilman Jones saying before I saw yours, so then I'll come back to you, Councilman Herring. And then, yeah, and then vice versa, person, Councilman Jones?
Uh, yeah, that, like I, uh, recommend, my other recommendation before was to bring in, have the, uh, either one of the inspectors. Or the, uh, 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 she, the, uh, head of the department for public, this part of, uh, public health. Uh, Deborah, I can't think of her, Deborah Freeman, have her come in, uh, come to the council meeting or come in and tell us what the difference is. Why is it that Parks and Recreation, you know, doesn't require you to have a licensed caterer? And then all the venues in Prince George's County, such as, uh, uh, that, um, banquet halls. In Prince George's County have to have it. So, evidently, we need to find out what the difference is, you know, on what the county actually requires. And I would suggest or recommend that we bring this, uh, Deborah Freeman in and have her speak to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, Councilman Herring?
Let Councilwoman for, um, Councilwoman Ferguson go ahead on that way.
Okay.
You're separate from this stuff.
Uh, Vice President Ferguson.
I just wanted to say that in looking at this document, that's, uh, uh, Prince George's County requires all caterers must. Um, the way I interpreted it as, it's, it's addressing caterers. This is the, um, requirements or the criteria for. Those that are claiming to be caterers. It does not, um, address anything about food. Uh, you know, this, uh, people bringing their food. So, um. That's a whole nother issue with, um, to me, it's, it's different, because it's not, um, clearly. It's, it's, I mean, I don't see anything in the document saying that, um. Personal or private food is not, um, permissible. This is just criteria to me. Um, for, if you're a caterer, you claim to be a caterer, then you need to follow these instructions. It's like if you. You know, have a business, then you need to have a permit and a license and things like that. So, that's, that's the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes. Can you scroll up on that document?
Scroll up.
Scroll up. We see the great document. Okay, uh, I mean, scroll down, I mean, scroll down. So we see the top of the very top of that document, the very title of the document. Oh, that's it right there. Okay, basically, this is what really gets me is because this, this, this document is basically the, what you, what's required for operating a catering business in Prince George's County. It has absolutely nothing to do with what you're doing, what we're doing in the goal room. We are not operating any catering out of that goal room. We do not cook in that goal room. This is just the outline of what is required for a catering business in Prince George's County. And we do not have a catering business in that room. So this does not, this actually really has absolutely nothing to do with the goal room and how we run it. Again, the county has constantly always allowed you to bring food in. It's your responsibility. And you, and you, you, when you sign a contract, I bet you, it's something in there that probably says, you know, any liability, food, whatever, it's your responsibility. Because again, like I said, I know three facilities that I've been in and they brought their own food in there. So again, this document here is just, I don't know why it's in here because we don't, we're not operating catering business. We're not running a catering business. But if somebody says they are a catering business, then they need, they need it here to this, this, this criteria, this criteria here. So that's all I wanted to say on that. So if anyone wants to speak on that, they can, before I move on.
Okay, so I I'll go to Councilman Farid and then we close it out. Councilman Farid, is that a new hand or old hand?
It, it was a new hand. Sorry, I didn't get off mute. Um, I was gonna say, I, I don't want to go the route of having somebody come visit our meeting. We talked about this many, many months ago, and it was said that that someone would have research or have someone come and that wasn't done. I think that the interpretation um, as I articulated it, Council Vice President articulated it, um, and Councilman Herring is the same, that this is pertaining to if you're using a caterer. It's not saying that you can only use a caterer, but if you're using a caterer, they need to be licensed. So I think we should just move forward with the waiver. As the majority of us have discussed previously, we've had plenty of opportunity to bring experts in to clarify whatever was felt needed to be clarified, and we didn't do that. So I think we should just move forward.
Okay. Um, as I recall, there, there was a consensus done before. Uh, but for, you know, just transparency sake, there's a consensus um, on whether we want to have a waiver uh, for food. Uh, Councilwoman Farid, yes, no?
Yes, we should have a waiver.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones.
No.
Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gill?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Hairston? I don't think, was he on, I don't know if he's on.
No.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, he was on. Yes, I, yes, wait.
Um, and I'm going to abstain just because I just don't have clarity on what a caterer, what, what constitute catering. Um, it's a judgment call for me. If, 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 you know, I'm not going to prolong this meeting. Mine is abstain. Um, all right, moving on. What page, uh, are we done, Councilman Herring?
I'm done with that. Yeah, I'm done with that. Um. Okay, I guess I just need clarity on this, this um, on page eleven. Um, where it said alcohol for ticketed events. Ticketed events with alcohol must have a ticket system as part of the ticket sales to ensure proper management of alcohol. It's um page eleven. Yeah, right there where it says alcohol for ticketed events. So what is, what exactly is that? So if, I'm just curious, if you have a wedding, you gotta have tickets for people to get drinks is, I mean, not a wedding, I'm sorry, ticketed event, but but I thought it'd be a ticketed events. They had to have a liquor license, but you're saying they also got to have a ticket system. So what is that?
So meaning that they um, so what I tell them is that if, if they're doing like, let's say if they have um, um, let's say like a reunion, um, and they purchasing tickets, right, that their guests are purchasing tickets. Um, like on um, what is that, uh, Eventbrite? Um, I just tell them if they wanted to have like a bar, that they can't take cash at there. They have to have a, a ticket system, basically, um, like on Eventbrite, create a system on Eventbrite to um, make sure that they know how that, how, how that's going to work because you can't take cash um, the day of.
Okay, so that, so they can't have a cash bar?
No.
But they can do a ticketed? So they'll get the ticket when they come in or how would that work? How would you, how would you, how would you monitor that? They're not just giving out alcohol?
Say that again?
They say, how, how do you monitor that? That they're not just giving it out without a ticket? I mean,
Well, well, we have security there. Um, and um, just to monitor everything like as far as cash or whatever like that, but there is no, they can't take any cash at the bar.
Okay. So it's almost like paying for your drinks ahead of time and then giving a ticket?
Or you can have, or they can have an open bar.
Okay, but they can't have an open bar? If they have an open bar, do they need tickets?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, I
That's only in cases, like if it's like a reunion or something like that, where maybe they're trying to like um, get their money back or like alcohol or something. That they will have to create some type of system in order to get their money back because they can't get cash, take, we can't take cash in the, in the room.
Okay, I, I personally think the option shouldn't even be there. To tell you the truth, I wouldn't even give them that option. All right, okay, um, whatever that is. Um, I guess and then if you go down, you see where it says ticket sales and cash collecting are not permitted on the premises of Jay's Law Cousin, Minnesota Center. This includes Cash App, PayPal, Zelle, any online systems. How would you actually know? If they're doing any of that?
I don't. But however, we putting it in the, in our contract is to make sure that they know that.
Okay, uh, because I mean, I just think, you know, you put it in there, but I mean, there's no way to monitor it. So really, it's a, it's a empty threat because you would never know if somebody did Cash App, PayPal, or Zelle, unless you take their phone and look at it, and I know that ain't gonna happen. So I just, I just was curious on how you would monitor that, when that was in there. All right, um, I guess the next thing is, I'm, uh, if we go to page thirteen, and I just want to, I just have a question, but I need to be done with this. Um, page thirteen, the rates. Okay, I'm looking at these rates and I'm just trying to figure out how y'all came at these numbers. Um, I know, again, y'all, when I hear you compare, but um, I also did some comparison myself. Um. Let's see, um, can I share my screen right quick? Let me see if I can share it, um, what I have here, if you don't mind, uh, Council President. Oh, I need to be, uh, I need to be um, enabled. It's not enabled. Let me see, now it says host disabled participant screen sharing?
All right, I think you should be able to go now.
Okay. Okay, so um, basically, I just, I just wanted to compare what we're doing with what's out there. I mean, the proposal for the current, and I was looking at the current rates in uh, the two thousand and twelve rate, since that's where we're supposed to be at. I guess that's where we're at. I mean, but things have been rescinded so many times. So I um looked at this, and I'm looking at what we have now, at five and a half hours, fifteen hundred dollars for Friday or Saturday, nine to eight P M. It's about two hundred and seventy-two dollars an hour for that event. But if you look at the new rate, which would probably be, I'm thinking somewhere around here, it goes up to twenty, it goes up to twenty-four hundred dollars, but you're getting seven hours. And on a, that's a Saturday, I'm sorry, Friday. So on a Friday, it goes up to twenty-one fifty, you get seven hours, it's three hundred and seven dollars. So we're taking it up by just three dollars, thirty dollars. We're adding about another hour and a half. And I'm trying to figure out financially, what is that doing? Because again, if you're gonna add another hour and a half, that mean you're gonna have more people there. And I think the staff is getting paid fifteen dollars an hour, so two people, that covers their expense. So you're really back to where you were before. Um, you're gonna break, you're gonna make it, make what you were making before, which is basically literally nothing. Um. Then I looked at the, the prime, the cabaret hours in the, in the two thousand and twelve, which is two thousand dollars, Friday and Saturday, eight P M and two A M. So I got the closest thing to that. And we, again, we're taking it up seven hours, it's three hundred and sixty-three dollars an hour. So Saturday, nine to four is three fifty-seven, so that's less than what we were paying, we were charging before because you increased the hours. And then if you go to the prime time, the nighttime hours, it's only forty-three dollars, about forty-four dollars more than what we were charging before. And again, if you got two extra people to cover those hours, basically that's eaten up. Um, um, for those events. So you're really, really at the same place. Um, non-prime time, again, we went, we already went over that, that nine hundred versus four hundred, Monday through Friday versus the new rates, which is nine hundred and eleven hundred for Fridays. Um, and then repasses, eighty-five dollars an hour. So you're looking at three hundred and forty dollars um, with a fifty dollar security deposit, and you're taking repasses up to five hundred dollars with a two hundred dollar security deposit. And, and that's for four hours. Um, hmm, that's a lot of money. Um, you've gone, it's gone up a hundred and sixty dollars, and then you add a two hundred dollar security deposit, even though they get that back. I think it's the security part, I don't know. I, that, that, that's, that's quite a bit. Um, but I think that the thing that's really telling here is that the Prince George's County Ballroom was, we got those figures. They charge three hundred and ninety-three dollars per hour. And they give you, on Monday through Friday, they give you seven hours at three hundred and ninety-three, which is twenty-seven fifty-four. And on Saturday, they give you uh, eight hours, which is thirty-one, three thousand one hundred and forty-six, which is three hundred and ninety-three dollars per hour. Now, they're charging three hundred and ninety-three dollars per hour, and you're getting eight hours, or thirty-one fifty, you're getting eight hours, and we're charging twenty-eight fifty for seven hours. And we, we, we're basically, our rate is basically more than what the PG County Ballroom is charging. So more, more, more than likely, people are gonna be like, well, I just paid the extra, you know, I, I go to PG County Ballroom first, and if they do a, another event, say earlier event on a Monday through Friday, they'll be like, I just paid the extra forty dollars and go to the PG County Ballroom. So these are, these prices are not, um, they're not competitive. They're not competitive at all because any late hour, any late event, they're paying more than what they would be paying at the Prince George's County Ballroom. Um, so I don't know how y'all came up with these figures. I don't know if y'all didn't look at the hourly rates versus um uh, a PG County Ballroom, because everybody talking about the PG County Ballroom, because I know I will go to the PG County Ballroom because it has better aesthetics. It has a beautiful uh, green space where you can do outdoor event if you wanted to. Um, it gives you a lot of options. So I'm just curious how y'all came up with these rates. Is this just something that y'all just thought to do? Did y'all, did y'all, did y'all compare the rates like I just did? Realizing that now you're, you're charging more for the goal room than you offer the Prince George's County Ballroom um, for even an event. And it's only forty dollars more, I mean, forty dollars less than uh PG County Ballroom for Monday through Friday event. Um, early event, so I'm just curious how y'all got these numbers. I really do. I don't think, there's been no and, and uh, nobody analyzed these rates, nobody looked at the market, nobody looked at anything to see what we really need to be charging. They just looked at everybody else and said, they're charging this, so we're gonna charge that. And not even looking at the, 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 um, amenities that make up that price and what they're offering. I, I, I really think that that, that needs to be looked at. If you want to charge something, at least give a reason why you're charging more than you are the Prince George's County Ballroom. And seeing this is why you, you, you really got to look at two of these things when you're out here doing this stuff. You know, not just sit there and do comparison shopping, you know, because somebody, I know somebody that won't buy, buy a TV at Walmart, but they're buying it uh, at Macy's, same TV, but you're getting it from Macy's, so it's better. You know, you're paying a little bit more, so it's better. But no, you know, that's not what it is. And now you're looking at the rates we have here, four hundred and seven dollars an hour versus three ninety-three, and that's a Prince George's County Ballroom versus our goal room. Yeah, I don't think, yeah, you're gonna drive people away. That's the biggest problem I, I see now is that you're trying to, you're trying to make some, make this a room that is not ready, is not yet to be. And even with remodeling, then you still cannot get the amenities that the Prince George's County Ballroom will give you or some of these other, uh, you know, Mont's Crosswinds or Camelot. You know, and Prince was kind of, and everybody compares Prince George's County Ballroom, anybody's been in knows how, what a beautiful room that is, and the, and the green space that it has, that you can do a lot of other things. You know, besides just an indoor event. So I just was, I'm just curious about that. So for these prices, did you just comparison shop and pick the price? Is that what the, is that what, how y'all came to these rates? Because the hourly rates just don't sync up for me, not when you run in a business.
Um, so I looked at different locations other than PG Ballroom and the locations that you were referring to. I looked at Lofts, um, um, I looked at um, which is uh, way more smaller, um, in a blank canvas. Um, and they were a lot more expensive, not just in PG County. I looked in Waldorf area. Um, and all of the venues, I looked at their prices, um, and what they were actually providing. And that's what I actually came up with. Um, so I'm not sure where you got these numbers from. Um, but I did, I did do a lot of research um, in the, in PG County and also in um, around, you know, other areas um, around the PG area as well.
Came off your spreadsheet. I got these numbers off your spreadsheet. The Prince George's County Ballroom numbers, I, I didn't call to get them, they're right there on your spreadsheet, and that's what they say they give. I mean, I'm not, yeah, I mean, that's where I got them from. All the numbers on here I got from your spreadsheet, except for the, the old numbers I got from the resolution, but these proposed numbers are on your spreadsheet. And I just, I not took the numbers from the non-resident because that's normally what we get. And I multiplied it by seven hours, and these are the, these are the numbers I got. Which are, with the hourly rate that you have, um, with the, I mean, no, this is actually the rate you have, twenty-one fifty for seven hours, twenty-four ninety-nine for seven hours, based on these hours, on these times. So I took all of this from your spreadsheet in the, in the Prince George's County Ballroom. I took that from your spreadsheet too. I, I didn't get those numbers. And then I took that number and I multiplied, I mean, I divided it by eight, and it gave me the um, hourly rate. And if you, if you um, yeah, and I just took it for the regular uh, for a resident. You know, um, so that's what I did. Um, if I took it for the non-resident, you'd be way over. I mean, I mean, if I took it for a resident, it'd be over. I mean, the numbers would be, the hourly rates would be way different. So I mean, I got, I got it from this, from this, I'm just trying to figure out what, how, how y'all came, how did you come at this? And my thing again is that, you know, when you look at something like this, you need to look, look at what's around us because that's our competition. You know, there's a lot of venues around here that's just like warehouse venues that they just turn into ballrooms, or, I mean, ballrooms, just uh, I don't know what you want to call them, you know, like, um, they're halls, let's say, uh, uh, event halls. They're just event halls, and they do them at Soul Fronts and some other places. And like in, our competition is the PG Prince George's County Ballroom, Mont's Crosswinds, all of them. Um, you know, the, the county facilities, because a lot of county, a lot of county facilities are utilized. Um, like the recreation center in, in these park buildings. So I'm just curious how you get the numbers and how we are going to be charging them more per hour than the Prince George's County Ballroom for a Saturday event in the evening. Um, yeah, that's just, I mean, I mean, these are just questions that need to be answered, and I think we need to look at that. I mean, these are just questions that need to be answered, and I think we need to look at that closely. Again, I still think a, a formal analysis should have been done. By somebody that's. Really. Savvy with the business in, 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 in the atmos, in the, um, environment. The meeting room environment in this area. Because just throwing these numbers out here, just based on what everybody else is doing, is not making it marketable. Is making it, it's a guessing game that, okay, if I take these rates up, people will pay them, because they're not paying as much as the Prince George County Ballroom, but technically. Right now, they're paying less. I mean, we, I mean, they'll, they'll pay the P, Prince of County Ballroom less than what we're paying, based on, um. The twenty fifty that we were paying, and for seven hours, and you get eight hours. On a Saturday for the PG County Ballroom, so. This is four hundred dollars for seven, so you're talking about, even though it's fourteen dollars, but they see it as a difference. And they're not gonna pay fourteen, I, I'll pay the extra fourteen, I mean, I'll pay the less money. To go to the P, Prince of County Ballroom, and I pay a little bit more during the week to use the Prince of County Ballroom, forty dollars. That ain't nothing, you know, for seven hours, two hundred and eighty dollars. And that extra three hundred dollars to it, and you get a nice room like that, with the amenities that you have, and the outside greenery and everything else, so. Those, those are my questions, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm basically done, um. Oh, I did have one more, I did have one more, um. The memorial service. So. So I, I just wanna understand this, cause we, I know, but, right, cause the maximum's four hours, one hour for setup, one hour for a breakdown. So it's like, the, for, everything is included in that four hours, so you technically get two hours for the actual event. Is that what we're saying? For the memorial services?
So, um, I believe that, so the memorial service is four hours. You, and you get one hour for setup, and you get one hour for breakdown, so technically six hours.
Six hours? Really? Okay. At thirteen hundred dollars. So we're just gonna do away with memorial services, cause. Even with that. And understand that the, the lobby, because some of them are no longer memorial service, they're more like a campere. Yeah, I, 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 you know, me personally, I think they should get two hours and one hour for setup, it should be four hours all in, and included, everything's included in that. And they get two hours for the memorial service, cause it's a memorial service, four hours give you a party. Yeah, so, that's not for me now. This thing with the stage, it says to be determined. What is that, on page fifteen? Is this to, to be determined, available option?
I believe at one point we were trying to see if we were gonna move the stage, or if we're gonna keep the state. But that's, that's something that we're, we're looking at with Tanika, to see if we're gonna do an upgrade, or if we're gonna remove it. Um, if we remove it, of course, you know, guests will have more space in there, um, but. That's, I believe that's where that came from.
Okay, um. Yeah, so that's, that's an issue for me too, cause one, that's a mobile stage, it's pretty good, we moved it all over the place, we used it for Glenn Arden Day. One year, moved it in, moved it out, so it's a portable stage, you can move anywhere in that room. That's why I seen it, it's in sections. And basically. Let me see, I think that's it for me. Yeah, um. Oh, one, one other thing, on the master catering liability waiver. I just want, uh, one thing is just, I'm just curious, on the ma, master. The Gold Room liability waiver, and it's the same thing for the community room. It says, I agree that I have selected a caterer of my choice to serve all food for my event, and agree that all leftover food distributed at this event. Be removed in a closed styrofoam or plastic container. And that they should not use any plates with aluminum foil. What business is it of the? Of us, how they take the food out of there?
Well, do you want food spilt on the floor?
Well, they, if food won't get spilled, I mean, they're eating food at the tables, and they're moving around with plates all over the place. If they gotta cover with aluminum foil, at least it's covered with aluminum foil and not open. I'm just, I'm just curious as to, 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 to the logic between that, because again. I mean, they move, food is all over the place, that's one of the hazards of having an event with food. Um, they're gonna drop food at the buffet table, they're gonna drop food at the table, they're gonna drop food all over the place. There's not cover, at least this is covered with aluminum foil and covered up, I just didn't understand the logic, cause you can drop a styrofoam container or a plastic container, and it'll pop right open. And food will be all over the place, so it doesn't, I mean, that's no guarantee that's not gonna. It's gonna keep food off the floor. I just was curious about that, so. Again, I think we look at, we, we, we just take things to a level that don't, they don't need to be at, so. Alright, I'm done with the Golden.
Alright, thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? Alright. With that. Uh, Miss Bun, I think the, um, waiver was agreed upon. Uh, and. We can move on. Last up is the, is there any other questions related to the? What is it called? Community Center?
Yes, Miss Brennan?
That was from Harry.
Okay, it's just time to go page two. I guess the top, smaller celebrations, meetings, seminars, and workshops only. What do you constitute as a smaller celebration? Uh, Ms. Bun. You muted.
Um, it could be like a tea party. I have people that, that come in for like a tea party, or, you know, a smaller event.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that nobody's being excluded who wants to use that room. Cause that's basically what the room is for, is for the community. Again, with the tables, eight to ten tables, um, if you go down item number three, four rounds without food service tables. Eighty people, four round, four rounds with food service tables, sixty-four. How do you come at that number? Because I know I had an event there, and I had. Twelve tables with food service tables. Eight people at each table. So that's ninety-six people. So how are you coming at sixty-four people? With food service tables? I'm not understanding that, because again, the room holds more than it.
From when we did a setup, it, that's what I, the numbers that I, I got.
That's not the numbers, and I've done, I've used the room a couple of times, with service tables, and had enough room in there. For these, um, twelve tables. Really, actually, we were gonna do fifteen, cause we still had room left, but we just decided to do twelve. And we had three longs for setup in the pantry for food. Um, cause that's, that's what that space is for. So, yeah, I think these numbers are too low for some of these, um. For food service, I think the numbers should be higher, for, um. Four rounds with food service tables, you can get more than sixty-four people in there. And you can get more than eight tables in there, I know that for a fact. Yeah, that number, that number's not accurate. And going on to page three. Yeah, that's the same question I had at the other one. Why are we, oh, this, yeah, this, no, this question here is, why are we offering them anything for that room? See, that room is just like a community room, and anything that they, everything, all they need is tables and chairs. And everything else they're supposed to bring in themselves, so why are we offering them anything? Because it's not a rental unit, and it shouldn't be renting, it's not a rental facility. It's a room that people can use, and we charge a usage fee. So we shouldn't be renting them anything else over and above, I mean, the tables and chairs. Um, these, all this other extra stuff, they should not. I don't even know how that's being made available to people, cause they need to know that everything they bring in there, they need to bring in there, and they need to take it out. Because if you bring, if you, if they rent from us, it gotta be, it gotta be, it gotta be managed, it gotta be watched, it gotta be accounted for, it gotta be inventoried, and I don't think we need to get into all of that. Most people just go in that room, you set it up, and I mean, you go in there, open it up, let them set it up the way they want to, and they clean it up when they finish, and you, you. It's less that your staff have to do, I don't know why we're offering any of this stuff. I mean, is any particular, I mean, I haven't met, know anybody who went to that room, they wanted to have any, where, where anything else, everything they bought, they bought themselves. So why are we offering this stuff? I'm not, I don't get it. I mean, and it shouldn't be rental items, it's not a rental facility.
Well, it may, um, wasn't rented, or they didn't ask, because it wasn't an option for them. So this is why I provided that option for them, so the events that they're having over there, um. That can already be, you know, set up by the time they get there. They already have a, a, a smaller, allotted timeframe. To get in, um, so if this is already done, if, if it's already running out, then they have that option. Again, it's, it is an option, they don't have to rent it. Um, they can also bring in their own, uh, items. It, it's, it's not, they don't have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm just saying, it just seems like it's just extra work for staff to have to haul this stuff over there and set it up and all this other stuff. When all they need to do is set up some tables and chairs and be out, you know, and, and, and be there, and just worry about tables and chairs, and not have to worry about collecting all this other stuff. Alright, um. And it says additional. Equipment may be available and added, as added services above, these items set into availability and be requested. Please refer to your current rent schedule, um. Floor plans and decorations, copies of the floor plans are available from the event manager, all modifications must go through approval, so. That, what type of floor plan is, I mean, there's only really like. One floor plan, which you can do in that room, is just set up the, the, the tables at the, the long tables and some rounds, and. You know, I mean, I've been in the room, and they set up the floor plan, I changed it, because it wasn't what I wanted. Even though I told them what I wanted, I changed it around when I got there, and. So. I guess, I don't, not, again, I'm not understanding, if it's just a community room, and people just wanna use it, and it's just there. You know, and your people don't have to, have to change the room around, if somebody go in there and change it, there should be, shouldn't be an issue with that. Um, it's a community.
So, point of order, Councilman Harry, um. Appreciate your lot of questions, but we are about to wrap this meeting up. Soon, so I'll give you another four minutes. Uh, at ten o'clock, and then we're going to proceed. Any other questions, you can. Uh, direct to her, uh, to Ms. Bun personally, because we, we have had a meeting with the Gold Room. I, I understand, unfortunately, weren't able to, to come, but at this point, it's a, a, a one-man show, and if that's the case, then. You know, council members have family members, uh. You know, some have children that need to get ready for school, so we're going to, um.
My concerns cannot be made public, because. People got other things to do. I mean, we just had a meeting till one o'clock in the morning.
No, we had a meeting, we had a meeting.
Well, but, but that doesn't mean I, all my questions were answered.
I understand, you weren't at that meeting.
Okay, so then that means that, that should have opportunities everybody else. If we're gonna discuss it, and I was at a couple of the meetings.
So, Councilman Harry. Respectfully. You have three more minutes.
You know, I, I'll, I'll finish it up on the floor, cause I'm gonna answer questions on the floor. Um, and I'm, I ain't gonna be expecting answers on it. Um, so I'll just keep the page I got, and I'll do it at the regular meeting. Um, I still, I, I, I should have a right to ask questions. You, you know, no, no, and you should not be cutting me off, because other council members get on here, and they speak way more than I do, on the subjects over and over again. Everybody has their voice on here, you know, so when I have my voice, I'm trying to find out what's going on, and I'm sitting here going through, uh. Fifteen, sixty-two, fifteen-page documents, and highlighting stuff, and if I wasn't at the meeting, then I should be extended the courtesy to at least, at least get my answers answered. My, my, uh, questions answered. Like everybody else had when they had the opportunity. So if you wanna have the meeting, don't say, I'm just gonna have a meeting, and we're gonna cut off, uh, a question at ten o'clock, cause. Everybody else ready to go, and they've already met. So that, basically, my concern is of no value to anybody, my questions are of no value to anyone, that's what you're basically saying. Anything I have on here that's a concern, I had to email her personally to get questions, and somebody else may have the same question. You know?
Councilman Harry, respectfully, your question alone, so, for example, you asked Ms. Bun a question. But you took five minutes to say, well, I've been to this place, I've been to that place, and give your own personal experience, instead of just asking a question, where'd she get the numbers from? And she can respond, and then you can, you know, respond to, you know, where she got the numbers to. But there's a personal story that goes along with, that has kind of elongated the, the questions. Yeah, I mean, the, the, this meeting has been pretty much predominantly you asking questions for the past two and a half hours.
I mean, councilmen, we give you a personal experience, that's what they use as an example.
We, respectfully, all councilmembers on here have given you the floor. Uh, in the past two and a half hours, and there's been no time left for anybody else. So what I'm saying is. Is that if you have additional.
Maybe you should continue the meeting, because some other councilmembers may have questions. That's what you should do. If it is, if you wanna wrap it up, then continue the meeting for a part two.
Uh, Councilman Harry, uh, you, you're a councilmember, I. I would suggest that you write the questions down, and you can ask them at another time, or you can.
I'm gonna ask him at the regular meeting, I'll send him for the regular meeting, and I'll just ask him. Again, because, again, I'm gonna, I wanted my questions answered, and I need, and how you know my constituents aren't interested in it, so again, again, my constituents. Can't hear my voice and my concerns, and some of the concerns they may have given me. So I can't, so that needs to be done privately versus being done publicly.
Councilman Harry, respectfully, it's been two and a half hours.
Again, we sat up in the meeting till one o'clock in the morning.
Not with one person filibuster in the meeting.
It doesn't, I'm not filibuster in the meeting, you give me a document, and you want me to, and I go through the document, and I have questions on it. I'm not understanding what the problem is. I mean, I have questions, I have questions, I'm a councilmember, and I have a right to ask these questions in a work session. Part of being in, being on the council is that you gotta sacrifice some time to. Because I'm the only one. Now is the issue. And I'm not saying, and my thing is this, and what you do is, if you feel that, the, the council members may have questions, then you have a part two. This is me, this is more than a one-night thing, because we went over it before them, that doesn't mean that, there's not other concerns that's out here that other councilmembers may have. I mean, I spent all day long, all weekend long going through this and highlighting stuff of my concern, and I don't feel I need to email her personally to get answers. She need to answer them publicly, so everybody can know, why, why shouldn't everybody know what the answers are to them?
So, let's, I, I agree with you, it's just that your, your questions are five-minute questions, your, 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 your true questions are maybe like a ten-second question. But it's the fluff around the questions that prolonged this meeting. So you can ask as many questions as you want to, but, yeah, respectfully, you've been long-winded.
So I gotta answer, I gotta answer questions the way you want me to ask.
No, I, 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 you have to be respectful of other people's time. I'm respectful of your questions, if you ask the questions, but if you give a personal story or anecdote with each question. Then it makes the meeting long.
People do it all the time, meetings run long all the time. I don't say a word about it, I let people go ahead on. Let them go on, and go on, and go on, I don't care, that's what, that's what, that's what they're about, that's what these meetings are about. I'd rather had a citizen be upfront, I mean, be. I'd rather be transparent with what's going on in the meeting versus leaving it to me going to one-on-one, and then I gotta go. Re, re, relate to all my citizens, what I'm, uh, what the answers were, no, I mean.
I got you.
So I mean, I can just, I ask him at the regular meeting, cause I had a few more, and I'll just ask him at the regular meeting.
I understand, I, I motioned. I submitted a motion that we adjourn this meeting, is there a second? If there's not a second.
Second, second.
Alright, um. Council. Oh, sorry, in discussion?
Yes, I need a voice vote.
Alright. Councilman Beharren?
No.
Councilwoman Gionna?
Can you ask a question again, please?
I, 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 uh, submitted a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, no.
Councilwoman, uh, uh, Farid?
Yes.
Um. It's Mr. Har, uh, Councilman Harrison, well, is Councilman Harrison here, Councilman Harrison?
Yeah, I'm here.
It's a motion to adjourn, yes or no?
No.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
No.
I'm a yes, yes loses, Councilman Harry? You have a floor?
Wrap this up, so we can get on out here, I only had a few more questions left, um. But I addressed, so the waiver situation also goes for the community room too. When it comes down to catering, cause that's just a community, and this. Correct.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
So the waiver that we did for the goal room also is for the community room also. You can bring your own food in.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay.
For both.
Alright, um. And I just, and, and, um. That's it, I'm done, that's all I had to do, so I'm done.
I gave you the, the, the five minutes, Mr. Harry, and you used the five minutes.
But see, if you would've just let me finish, it wouldn't have been a problem, you wouldn't have said anything, you spent five minutes, you gave me three minutes, I only needed one.
Alright, well, I appreciate it, Mr. Harry, thank you.
Alright, appreciate y'all.
Alright. Any other council members?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Gionna.
Just for a point of clarity, will we be discussing this again before we take it to a vote? Or is this going to be it, and then we go into public hearing and, um. Regular meeting for a vote?
Uh, no, this is going to the public hearing, uh, the waiver will be updated. Uh, no one else had any questions or, um, changes. So the, the waiver, uh, will change, will be included, um. And I believe that was it.
Council President?
Council, I'm sorry, who's that, um, Council Clerk?
There were a couple of more, um, what I'd like to suggest is that I go and work with, uh, Ms. Bun again, and. Since the majority of them were Councilman Herring's concerns, that we run them past him before the public. Hearing to ensure everything's as human.
So I understand, but it, it has to be an agreement from the council. Councilman Harry had voices, concerns, and his opinions, but if the council, uh, if it's a council, enjoy the council's will. To not change those things, then it stays as is, that's why I opened the floor to the rest of the council. But if there aren't any other changes that the council wants to point out, and agree with Mr. Harry, then they'll stay the same.
Understood.
Alright, so, the only thing that the council has agreed on is to include the waiver. And of course, the, the small wording, uh, that council, not council, Ms. Bun. Stated that it should have said something different, but it didn't, she'll make those changes as well. Okay. Alright, well, at this point, I do not need a motion to adjourn. Our hearts and minds are clear, the time is ten oh seven, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.